Life is not with you Sai Make it take and jeje I want to use this special opportunity To recognize great team Odwe Bojoku I can't also forget General Philip Effiong Okama Dalosaw Kamche taka no men underground Umoma o kobiwe Anye na fwa kolonu Hebron Defacto government in homeland Chisi anika Special recognition to every Biafran who have been supporting from Tewana May him continue to flourish in your different endeavors This is Mazinandeka no Ohamadike Uano piafora Egadi The Prime Minister Obatobiye Okechukunkere simokelekiyo Okama
Okechiyo Okechukuka ma Okechukuka inayono no 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 Okechukuka ma Onyamana kiti kiti bakulo onu Okechukuka ma Welunditi chukuka sebele Okechukuka ma Oh okechiyo Okechukuka ma Mama biko yongo olisa Okechukuka ma Okechukuka inayono no no Okechukuka ma Okechukuka inayona nyasi Okechukuka ma Ayole ayiga kolole ya role nu Owi bole Che taka na ndubafwa When plus one is two, two plus two is four, you know Onye puruchiyu zapa no 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 Joy, joy, joy Don't give up One day It's so close It's so close Okechukuka ma Never you give up, no 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 Okechukuka ma Believe in your dreams, brother Okechukuka ma Never you say no 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 Okechukuka ma Okechukuka inayono no 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 Okechukuka ma Never you down your faith, no no Okechukuka ma Keep your head up, keep on fighting Okechukuka ma Ayabalala ayabalajodo Okechukuka ma A big shout out to Mazi Okechukunkere I salute you, my Pheer Mazi Simonibah Life is sweet when you're patient The greatest shout out goes to the media team, great talent Nde wonu
Life is a process No matter how you go about it Mazi Okechukunkere Omale changoke The Biafran Republic Government Exeter Finance Ministers Is humbly campaigning for global Biafran financial support For the purpose of Finland Convention Biafran Defense Forces And redeclaration related activities I appreciate all Biafrans who have been supporting our liberation movement I also urge everyone to massively support more than ever Especially in these critical times Oh my fellow lovely great Biafrans Let's come together and support our Prime Minister Mazi Simonibah Who is currently working tirelessly to hand over our freedom to us this year 2024 Obonye, obonye, kemga kaza lo no Freedom is coming, yeah, yeah Yo 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 Mazi Okechukunkere Salute every Biafran specially Iya Okechiyo Okechukuka ma Okechukuka inayono no 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 Okechukuka ma Onyamana kiti kiti bakulo onu Okechukuka ma Welunditi chukuka sebele Okechukuka ma Oh okechiyo Okechukuka ma Mazi Okechukunkere neke lunu Okechukuka ma Okechukuka inayono no no Okechukuka ma Okechukuka inayona nyasi Okechukuka ma There is no magic to progress and success in life Life gives back what you gave to it It takes a man who believes in himself to great worlds So keep working hard And never lose hope in what you believe in Ayakata Life is not with you Sai Make it take and jeje I want to use this special opportunity To recognize great team Odwe Bojoku I can't also forget General Philip Effiong Okama Dalosaw Kamche taka no men underground Umoma o kobiwe Anye na fwa kolonu Hebron Defacto government in homeland Chisi anika Special recognition to every Biafran who have been supporting from Tewana May him continue to flourish in your different endeavors This is Mazinandeka no Ohamadike Uano piafora Egadi The Prime Minister Obatobiye Okechukunkere simokelekiyo Okama Okechiyo Okechukuka ma Okechukuka inayono no 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 Okechukuka ma Onyamana kiti kiti bakulo onu Okechukuka ma Welunditi chukuka sebele Okechukuka ma Oh okechiyo Okechukuka ma Mama biko yongo olisa Okechukuka ma Okechukuka inayono no no Okechukuka ma Okechukuka inayona nyasi Okechukuka ma Ayole ayiga kolole ya role nu Owi bole Che taka na ndubafwa When plus one is two, two plus two is four, you know Onye puruchiyu zapa no 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 Joy, joy, joy Don't give up One day It's so close It's so close Okechukuka ma Never you give up, no 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 Okechukuka ma Believe in your dreams, brother Okechukuka ma Never you say no 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 Okechukuka ma Okechukuka inayono no Okechukuka ma Never you down your faith, no no Okechukuka ma Keep your head up, keep on fighting Okechukuka ma Ayabalala ayabalajodo Okechukuka ma A big shout out to Mazi Okechukunkere I salute you, my Pheer Mazi Simonibah Life is sweet when you're patient The greatest shout out goes to the media team, great talent Nde wonu Life is a process No matter how you go about it Mazi Okechukunkere Omale changoke The Biafran Republic Government Exeter Finance Ministers Is humbly campaigning for global Biafran financial support For the purpose of Finland Convention Biafran Defense Forces And redeclaration related activities I appreciate all Biafrans who have been supporting our liberation movement I also urge everyone to massively support more than ever Especially in these critical times Oh my fellow lovely great Biafrans Let's come together and support our Prime Minister Mazi Simonibah Who is currently working tirelessly to hand over our freedom to us this year 2024 Obonye, obonye, kemga kaza lo no Freedom is coming, yeah, yeah Yo 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 Mazi Okechukunkere Salute every Biafran specially Iya Okechiyo Okechukuka ma Okechukuka inayono no 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 Okechukuka ma Onyamana kiti kiti bakulo onu Okechukuka ma Welunditi chukuka sebele Okechukuka ma Oh okechiyo Okechukuka ma Mazi Okechukunkere neke lunu Okechukuka ma Okechukuka inayono no no Okechukuka ma Okechukuka inayona nyasi Okechukuka ma There is no magic to progress and success in life Life gives back what you gave to it It takes a man who believes in himself to great worlds So keep working hard And never lose hope in what you believe in Ayakata Life is not with you Sai Make it take and jeje I want to use this special opportunity To recognize great team Odwe Bojoku I can't also forget General Philip Effiong Okama Dalosaw Kamche taka no men underground Umoma o kobiwe Anye na fwa kolonu Hebron Defacto government in homeland Chisi anika Special recognition to every Biafran who have been supporting from Tewana May him continue to flourish in your different endeavors This is Mazinandeka no Ohamadike Uano piafora
And all the rising sun we love and cherish We love and hope and all our brave heroes We must defend our lives or we shall perish We shall protect our heart from all our faults But if the price is that for all we hold dear Then let us die without a shred of fear Hail to be a consecrated nation Oh Fatherland, this be our solemn pledge Defending thee shall be our dedication Spilling our blood will count our privilege The waving sun that which and all the world free Shall always be a part of liberty We shall emerge triumphant from this ordeal And through the crucible unscathed will pass When we avoid the wounds of battle to heal We shall remember those who guide us Then shall our children feel the glorious song Of victory we score all might and wrong Oh God, protect us from the hill pitfall Guide all our movements lest we go astray Give us the strength to heal the human is fall To give and not to come the costly chain Let those who rule to suffer with resolution To make this climb a land of righteousness
All hail Beowfra Land of the rising sun We love and cherish We have vanquished all enemies All hail Beowfra God bless Beowfra In him we trust Shout it, sing it All hail Beowfra God bless Beowfra We have emerged triumphant from all our faults Through the crucible unscathed we passed victorious Our trumpets pealing the glorious song Play it, sing it All hail Beowfra All hail Beowfra We shall always remember all that perished In the struggle for our freedom All hail our heroes Our prayer shall be born both day and night Save them always All hail Beowfra All hail Beowfra Now our star shines everywhere We crave humility God guide and protect us all All hail your wisdom Shielding us from glory Unleashed by our light and bent Beowfra, Beowfra shining bright
As long as we come on air every evening The whole world must listen As long as we preach this very gospel Chukuku Okike Abiyama must be with us Therefore, without any further hesitation We must proceed to offer every prayer To Chukuku Okike Abiyama who reside in heaven Therefore, as we always commence Not from today but from of old Our Father who art in heaven Nganyinkebine ligwe Kahagedinsong That your name may be hallowed by men That we may bow at the mention of it That we may offer every glory unto thee That we may offer you every adoration and adulation Because there is none like thee You fight our battles for us Every blessed day you demonstrate through your kindness and your everlasting mercy That you are our Lord, our God and our Creator This evening we offer these your children unto thee All over this very planet that you created They are listening across the empire 24 time zones on this very planet We are the inhabit They are listening to your gospel this very evening This gospel of redemption, a gospel of hope A gospel of restoration, a gospel of renewal This very gospel of freedom, this very gospel of emancipation As only you ordained Onye pre - meaning that this very gospel was preached That mankind may be set free from the eternal damnation of the creation of the British My goodness me I want to remain in the spirit Because we must worship heaven We answer your name, oh Lord of hosts Everything about us is designed to offer glory unto thee We have atoned for our sins last year This very year we have not only atoned for our sins We have spilled, we have shed blood, they have shed our blood We have let our sacrifice be made unto thee Even on the 30th of August As we are being felled by the bullets of the enemy By the workers of iniquity and of darkness We remain very strong today To beckon upon thee, to ask you for your mercy and for your grace To ensure that your kingdom is restored upon the face of the earth That you can bring your healing hand to bear upon the life of those of them that you created For one singular purpose and that purpose alone Which is to worship you in truth and in every honesty Is there any way that we have heard? Is there any way that our ancestors may have seen? We confess before a congregation of the whole of humanity We confess before a congregation of the whole of humanity To ask you oh Lord of hosts to have mercy upon us Become an yebele tineke nanonige You must have mercy upon us We have suffered enough We have been subjugated enough We have been tortured enough We have been imprisoned enough We did not do these people anything Our only crime is to answer your name Our only crime is to be born your children Our only crime is to excel at everything that we place our hands into Our only crime is to exhibit your glory and your blessing Which manifestedly is upon our lives every blessed day That is why they want to kill us That is why the British want to join those of them who don't know you To destroy your creation and your inheritance You will not allow shame to befall your name You will not allow the enemies to triumph over the lives of your children Because you created us to exist, to worship, to honor and to praise you That is exactly what we are going to do when this Biafra comes It will come in truth and in every honesty Because we remain every blessed day Chukwa Abiama bine lige whiter than white and whiter than snow Oh wo zanyi si mehe yuchineke Is there any way that we have sinned That you cannot forgive us, our trespasses To enable us to fulfill your own word which was spoken thousands of years ago That instead of what you promised not to come to pass That heaven and earth will cease to exist You opened your mouth Chukwukeka Abiama To bless mankind to the coming of Yahweh Eschewah Who came here and said Let your kingdom come on earth as it is in heaven Those words can never be in vain Because they are anchored upon your holiness and your magnificence That is why in the end we know that Biafra will come That these children that we have given birth to all over the world And their children, and their children, and their children As long as they give birth to them and they are Biafrans Chukwukeka Abiama hagefe rofe They will worship you in truth and honesty Through this very work we are doing Mankind will come to understand you Let your miracle be wrath in our lives Let us witness and behold your magnificence Your holiness, your mystery and your grace Under our command Oh Lord of hosts we call upon you We call upon you to heal We call upon you to provide succor to those of them who are inconsolable We ask you to come and strengthen those who are weak We ask you to restore hope where there is hopelessness We ask you for inclusion where there is destitution We ask you for one brotherhood, one camaraderie One bone, one blood and one flesh of your children The Ephesus and the Bibios, the Isan The Shakiri, the Isobos and also those of them from Isoko We are travelling all the way to the lands of Igala We are moving on from there to Idoma, to Igerde To the territories of the Ibo land All these places we dedicate unto thee All these lands of yours We ask you to cover it with your mercy Because Biafra will come and when it does Chukwukeka Abiama nige fege rofe noso puleche We will dance on these streets I'm telling you By the time that we are done Humanity will think that we are mad We are drunk in your glory and rightfully so Because your kingdom will come to rest upon this very earth That very kingdom is the unadulterated, non-negotiable sovereignty Of the Republic of Biafra That your will may be fulfilled in our time All these we pray, all these we ask for In no other name apart from that name that belongs to you Ahadensosinebegebi wonnebegebi Isem 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 My name is Namdekanu I am the leader of indigenous people of Biafra All over this very planet I tell you Ruwe ebedine wasotu By now so's your machine
Yes, we are coming out Yes, uh It's like, uh Ekom admin is having a network challenge But Ekom admin, I will back If we are back over to you Oh my Yes, good on
My lord, I am dead already
Defender
I did not jump
Defend myself Nigeria
I did not jump
They came to kill
I did not
Ekom admin You see I have network problems Ekom admin Uh, a very wonderful story from here Uh, this is because the system I'm using here Uh, keep telling me that I have been muted from there So I'm not able to unmute myself Uh, that's why all Okay sir Uh, thank you for your I said God of our lives The God of our ancestors Odomegu Odjuko At the very last head of states Of the deformed Republic of Biafra In person of a general Philip Ethion Of blessed memory Now we the people of the East We want to also acknowledge The very effort of our supreme leader Who is where he is today And just because of this very cause We will also acknowledge Our prime minister Who also Is where he is Just for our sake, I swear We will acknowledge Our table acting prime minister The people of the East cherish you Your excellency The very first time you are here with your entourage You were here before your excellency Visit us states by states Your visit to our respective states Honestly speaking, tremendous results Since our central office And the acting prime minister of Brigi The issue of region came into our system Though this region Was met with resistance for some quarters Of those people Who actually do not mean well for us Your excellency today The region we brought into what we are doing Has brought about the unity we are enjoying as a region It are several today That will have never been identified I have a living example of what we are saying here Your excellency The unity we are enjoying today As a region Is because Of this regional system We counted on On some of the numerous achievements Of your administration Your excellency Our AKA Your excellency As a region we look back to where you resume office Even though It appeared that You had been the most criticized Even though it appears that You have been the most attacked Even though it appeared that you have been the most hated Among the wise men of the East But your excellencies sir We have been honored at this moment When we say You have achieved more than we have ever expected Your excellency our AKA has a Some minutes back The intention of our enemies Belting from Kenya I got back home They go to the D O S compromise They go to the D E S network This is realized We lost a lot of personnel Either the bullets or the arrests The movement was then at a point of total collapse Behold, our prime minister surfaced from nowhere Who saved the struggle To the point Where our enemy showed up again Collided With a finished authority To determine where he is And the same intention of our enemy Came up again because They intended to collapse Brigi they intended to collapse Brigi. From the information of Brigi, it has been the nightmare of our enemy and they intended to collapse Brigi from the foundations. They intended to make sure that Brigi ceased to exist totally. But glory be to Chukwukikabiamah, who prompted your emergence as our APA today. And we are telling you sir that upholding Brigi is the greatest of all achievements you have recorded within the space of one year. To our enemy, one year was enough to have collapsed the entire system. But to us, it is an achievement on your side because on the one year, our enemy met a rock in your personality. Who gave no chance for Brigi to collapse. I'm sorry, I think they have lost his gadget again. We should go, we should go to item number two.
I didn't hear anything, I didn't hear anything for the past three or four minutes before this comment. I can't believe it's from my end. Everybody.
And also co-host COA, COA is here. COA, co-host COA. He is the one that is going to attend that number three. Okay, number, number four is the one. Number four is the one.
Yeah, good evening to everyone all Biafrans of goodwill and good conscience. Particularly those who are showing all concerns and making all efforts to ensure the restoration of our dear nation, the Kingdom of God on earth, Biafra land. It is my pleasure to present a brief history about not just the eastern region, but the entire region of Biafra land. So beyond beyond the eastern region, we uncover certain things that Biafrans need to know. Because didn't just start this whole thing. We planned it and here is where we are today. So I want to let Biafrans know today that the Biafra de facto government is clearly stating that the 40 states of Biafra Confederation were already created and existing. So focus on the regions, not on the states. More so, the Biafra de facto government did not create or amend the 40 states, but only partitioned them into five great confederating regions following necessary factors, not natural factors. The necessary factors are about basic issues that unify all Biafrans. Moots the arrangement of Biafra structure and fast track the Biafra liberation without destruction, without stagnation or retrogression. The natural factors are about language, culture, resources and etcetera, which are secondary issues and capable of dividing and distracting the people or delaying the process of the region creation and Biafra liberation. More so, the Biafra de facto government followed the factor, order and policy of equal national representation to partition the 40 states into five confederating and geographical regions, which are subject to future improvement or amendment. The creation of regions are part of standard completion and readiness of Biafra structural arrangements for independence qualification and recognition by other countries. The five regions have timely come, same way the 40 states came by necessity and as part of Biafra restoration template. The five regions announced by Biafra de facto government, namely northern region, southern region, eastern region, which is hosting us today, western region and central region becomes henceforth the proper and official confederating and geographical identity and expression in the Biafra Confederation. The hinterland, coastal land and the other ways being expressed before now as regions are mere descriptive expressions, not proper and official expression. Considering the current situation of division, conflict, misdirection and sabotage in the Biafra struggle caused by the agent of subtility and deception, Ngosi Orabweze, the Biafra de facto government carefully appointed and authorized only 12-man committee, mostly administrators, who looked into the partitioning of the already existing 40 states into five regions through summit. The committee members are administrators of Enugu State, Omambala State, Itai Anang State, Ikemba State, Ibane State, Apakip Oro State, Alanso State, Olu State, Eboni State, Minister of Interior, Secretary of State and Chairman of Defence Chiefs. They held a series of meetings on various dates and at some point appointed five-man special committee for the final submission and review of partitioning suggestions or proposals from the general committee members. Some members of the committee submitted their respective suggestions or proposals which were generally and severally discussed, reviewed and analyzed by all the committee members leading to the unanimous adoption of the announced map of five regions and 40 states of Biafra Confederation, with eight states for each region. We are not fighting for regions same way we are not fighting for states, but we are only fighting for the great Biafra Confederation that encompasses both the regions and the states. Using four cardinal points, some states are located in more than one region, but can only belong to one region. And by the Biafra government's order and policy of equal national representation, or some states' cardinal points location were adjusted to accommodate the necessary requirement of eight states for each region, all connected by land. Therefore, it is wise and important for all Biafrans to abide by the decision of Biafra de facto government as future structural amendment exists, not only for the regions but also for the states, counties and wards in freedom. Right now, Biafra is in struggle and everything must not be perfect. So today we are being hosted by the eastern region of the Biafra Confederation, comprising eight states, namely Idun-Ibon State, Apakip Oro State, Abas State, Kalaba State, Eda State, Ikam State, Eboni State and Ohaupu State. So there's not much history to talk about the regions or the eastern region which is hosting us today. Everything began the day we created the states or the regions. Thank you so much for listening, great Biafrans. I yield my mic from here.
Okay, thank you so much COA for this wonderful presentation. And hello, sunny. We'll go to item number five. Okay. Please COA moderate the program. Over to you. COA. COA, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
I say you should moderate the program. So
Okay, okay.
Number five.
Alright. Alright, sir. So we move to the next item in the agenda. Excuse me. Okay. We proceed. We go to number five, the presentation of the traditional Kola Not. And on this, I will invite the admin of Idun-Ibon State to come and do the presentation. All his representative.
Yes. Biafrans all for the world, greeting from here. I want to present the Kula Not, it is our tradition for our eastern friends and even my state, especially Ibon State. So proceed. Please, I am trying to use Fala Gula because it's a traditional something.
Break the kola. Are we not going to break the kola? So, honorable.
Yes.
Break the kola well so that we can start picking the kola.
I break the kola knot. This way, the knot. I like it. So, each state can come and pick the kola knot. Take it in a sum of sixty thousand a year.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And so, fellow hands lovers of the um, we have the kola knot ready now to be picked. So it is time for everyone to begin to take the kola knot. We are taking the kola knot right now. So everyone is welcome to raise your hand and pick the kola knot. As I see, that table is very rich. So I want to see hands up, hands up. Alright, I tell. This is.
Sorry.
COA, we started by state by state.
Okay, I should go state first.
We are just.
Alright. Okay, let us follow the direction given to us. So to pick the kola knot now and support the breaking of the kola knot. We want all the states of the, first of all, of the eastern region to take the lead, to lead forward to the forty states, because the eastern region is hosting us, so they will have to take lead. So on behalf of Ohaupu State, we are taking the kola knot with a sum of thirty thousand a year. Ohaupu State taking the kola knot with um, three thousand a year. Maybe I should be playing the eastern region, yes.
Yes.
So, I call on Idun-Ibon. You have taken, Idun-Ibon has taken with fifty thousand a year. I was taking with thirty thousand a year. I call on Akapik Oro. Akapik Oro Admin of State, come and pick the kola. So that we can move on. Akapik Oro, or anyone from Akapik Oro of State can pick the kola on behalf of his or his. No comment please. If you are hearing my voice, please switch to action so that. Wonderful Biafrans, the kola knot is on the table and we need to take the kola knot. State by state first, beginning with eastern. Akapik Oro, are there? Okay. We can come back to Akapik Oro. We go to Aba State. Admin of Aba State or any member or citizen of Aba State come and pick the kola knot on behalf of your state. I want to see hands up, only one hand. What's happening? Aba State citizens, where are you? Aba State executives, admin, where are you? We must make this to happen. It is not going to happen by itself. Everything you see in life did not exist on their own. People made them to exist. So if Aba State must be great, someone, we have to make it great. It is our responsibility to make our respective states great. Tonight, by taking kola knot on behalf of our state. Aba State. Okay, maybe Aba State citizens are not here. We will come back to them. So we move to Kalaba State. Kalaba State, okay, let me take this hand. Let wave down there. Go ahead. Let wave down there. Am I coming out?
Yeah, I was, I was meeting.
Okay, okay, go ahead, go ahead. Pass this to them. You can go ahead and pick.
With the main house, I mean everybody.
Please.
At the end, I salute you. Honorable representative of the national, I salute you. I don't know who is Aba Admin. I'm coming to represent. I'm not one of officers, but I cannot sit here and stay in the corner and sit quiet. And this is it. And I'm taking this opportunity to call those who are the decision makers or who are to carry the Aba State, let them come up, because Aba is landing. All the town halls members are ordered to be there. Hadley here, Aba State, Aba should buckle up. Let them tell you what others doing. On behalf of, on behalf of Aba, I will give thirty a year to pick kola. And then, because I will be going, I will do my own business afterwards. I will be giving twenty a year on behalf of my family and I will be giving twenty a year, that is, making all the fifty a year I will do tomorrow. And I will send it to Minnesota. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. That's great. A lot of the fact that you did not let your state down. Every state citizen, it is your duty in order this to represent your state. If your admin is not up and you can't stand up and be really needful. So, I appreciate you for setting up the responsibility. Alright, we go to item, this is three. Go ahead, put yourself and speak. I tell, this is three. I see, I see, can you hear? Well, I speak. We are taking the kola. We have enough kola on the table. And the kola has been booked for all of us. Everyone is eligible to take kola, even if you're a woman, there is other there, you can take other. And if you look very closely at the table of the meeting, there are many other which you can take anything from the table of your state. So they must be upon. They are delayed. But I have been I tell. There's more. Am I coming out loud, please? So you are coming out, go ahead and speak. Okay. Even though I am having network issues tonight, but nevertheless, to go cadem in our side. Okay. Seems like. Are we here? Ah. On behalf of the people of Ibon that I am representing, I don't know where I come from at all at all. Hello, I. You are cannot repeat your statement for us again. John, it seems I lost him again. I talk so bad. Okay, yeah. Now, Aba Ikom State. Clear. For here. Yeah, let's go ahead, go ahead now. You are clear. Okay, today, as deputy head of the region and also Ikom State representative, are we, the Ibon people, we are represented in the east here. We have to pick the kola. We need to get a sum of four hundred and ninety nine thousand a year for my Ibon States. Honorable. We have police here on this zoom. Yeah. Arrested for any one to abuse, we have here. We want to make each state region, the region and all the other region. We want to prepare before coming to this. Like I said before, my name is Honorable God with him. The Ibon State has been straight for us. Not, not. I was the deputy head of the eastern region. I represent, which was putting the kola knot with a sum of nine, with a sum of four hundred and ninety nine thousand a year from here. Alright. In effect. That is wonderful. Thank you so much. Singing to anyone that has made a move of a, this one for um, committee, please. I will make sure. Please. Okay. Now, please, if you finish speaking, you put down your hand so that we can know that you are done. Okay? Otherwise. For now, you should, uh, uh, those who are, hold it on, uh, call the state first. Let them um, fish and who. You know, I will by their hands. Okay? So if you are coming, make sure that you are coming for your state or on behalf of your state for now. You can also take kola for yourself. Then um, we move to Eda State. Eda State Admin or Representative or. Um, okay. Begin New York. Let me take the hands that I'm seeing on the screen.
Hello, Biafrans.
Hello, welcome.
I read my heart because there's um, a correction that was supposedly made. COA, you did not correct Ikom Admin. You started it, you realize he made a mistake and you needed to correct him, but you didn't. Um, this is.
Correct that.
For.
This meeting is being recorded.
Our rule states that if you want to mention your donation is either a year. If you raise your hand to speak, when you finish, you lower your hand. If you don't, that's a penalty for you. So, everybody should take that into their brain and the admins at home, you teach your members. Because we are getting ready to move into our new nation and we are not going with old clothes and old behavior. We have rules and regulations and we obey rules and regulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Begin New York. And so if you are raising your hand, you are going to take kola for your state. Either as a citizen, as an admin or a representative. You can as well take for yourself after you have taken kola for your state. Both men and women are welcome. If you look at our table of the meeting, it is so rich with many items. So you can make a choice there. So I take um, Okudle somewhere. Your hands are up. Over you. Okudle summer, your hand is up.
Okudle Somar, your hand is up.
Okay, you know.
It seems like uh, Okudle Somar has disappeared, so we move to Victor. Okay. Victor, Monster, go ahead and speak. Victor, also, over to you.
You can raise your voice a bit.
Alright.
Okay.
Well, I if, if I audible. Uh, I just want to use this opportunity to say. Uh, Biya France, I believe we are over sixty-five of us are here right now and many will be joining. If you are listening to my voice right now, you can understand that we are in a serious business.
Yes.
So if you think that you will come here and just stay on the business session and occupy the host business for that reason, you are. You are doing yourself. Many are called, few are choosing. We are fighting for our freedom. We must fight. No sleeping. Mazinambe can be dead. Anyway, I will not uh, waste much of our time. So I'm encouraging each and every one of us that are here, raise up your hands, raise up your hands and keep whatever you have. I'm going to support right now. I'm from other states, I'm a citizen of other states, if you are back, I'm going to support my state for now, some of fifty thousand eje, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
And I like what he said.
Mm-hmm.
Raise your hand and um, do the needful, that's why we are here. Everything we are doing is towards the promotion and restoration of the. Collectively. So if you are here with us, it is your duty to participate in what we are doing. Do not only be.
Uh, sir, go ahead and call the states, uh, as you have called Eder. Please, uh, please, I hope you are here.
Yes, I, he's treating those who raise hand, let them adjust.
For now, hands should hold on, let all the states run their decision before their hand will come to general uh, support.
Okay, um, we move to E.
Yeah, hold on, yeah, hold on, let me take the mind, uh. Thank you, Biya France, uh, it is very important that uh, beginners of your base, when your state is called. You'll do the needful to give an eh, a supportive, encouraging eh, backup. You know, challenges we are having is some of our home base. Have been discouraged with some other competitive eh, challenge facing with Tungosa or Abesetim. And it's, it's affecting them, which cause a lot of states suffering quashoko in gathering their members. However, it is the duty of the people living abroad to always with time periodically visit your state, identify with the administrators. Give them motivating encouragement, eh, motivate them by giving them some backup arrangements. And guidelines on how the state will be functioning. So that in the time of this gathering, you will not be disappointed that your state is called. And became as though there is no existed being in that state, while you are doing very well, living comfortable in another man's country. While we are struggling to seek on how we can better our country so that we can go home. And they enjoy the natural and the man-made amenities. Uh, in the course of that, uh, um. I'll be supporting Eder's state, although I've been trying to work in synergy with the some administrators. Also even taking the lead to seek if I can hold a meeting with Eder's state, but the challenge is beyond control. When uh, our brother here, good guy was speaking, I told him I was in communication with Eder's state admin. He even sent me a screenshot, the challenge is facing to go in in the forum. But in any case, I've been supporting on behalf of Eder's state. Uh, with a sum of thirty thousand eje to ensure that the name of Eder did not be called and in a waste. Also seek in the, in the audience and the. To every Eder being, wherever you are. Do justice to that and bring in your one eje to help in a long way to represent us uniformly. And also support the cause of Biya France through the beginning, go.
Thank you. So we move to Kalabastet. Admin of Kalabastet. Or a representative or a citizen of Kalabastet. It's over to you. And you know, honorable uh, Minister of Interior, their names did not bear their states. Uh, we'll be picking the hand.
Uh, like um, like Kalaba, you can leave Kalaba and go to other states now, call other states.
Okay, Ecom State have spoken, then Eboni State.
Okay, it's my turn.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you so much, uh, everyone in this uh. Town hall meeting, it's a great privilege to all of us to gather here again. And um. We are making progress. And Eboni State is going to present the little what they have. COA, sorry, uh, Minister of Information, I think there is something I send to you. I don't know if you can play that uh, music to us, COA, uh, Minister of Information.
Honorable, we are still on the picking of cola.
Uh, the Eboni is presenting, this is a part of things that they want to use to present their cola.
Okay, alright, alright sir, thank you.
Eboni State have, Eboni State have a special number.
Okay. Alright, we will come back to Eboni State when they are ready.
Please address the Mongoba, address Mongoba so that you have been raising her for a long time.
And I want to call it, so Mongoba, over to you. Mongoba. Over to you, your hand is up.
Check on Okudle Somar.
I'm looking, I'm seeing the, the hands. Okay, am I coming out? Yes, you are coming out, go ahead.
Yeah, because I'm trying to almost since but it's not working. Uh, good evening, my ministers in the house.
Good evening.
Uh. Uh, special greetings to my. And uh, our information, Mr. Miles Sana Habara. Welcome to Eastan. Region of the Afroland. David, thank you, we are seeing you.
Thank you.
They were from here.
They were.
Um, on behalf of my daughter John, Afroland, I'm supporting fifty thousand eje to Eastan.
Yeah.
Region of Afroland, thank you, Devon.
They were. They were.
Good evening all.
Thank you.
Good evening all.
Go ahead, good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
I'm Okudle Somer from Yorong Has State, the financial director, on behalf of Yorong Has State. I am giving five thousand eje.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so. Yorong Has State, okay.
We move to Ochendu, what Biya France?
Is, is anybody writing this down or do you, do you need help? Is anybody writing it down, these amounts?
Someone should be writing it.
Okay.
Honorable uh, Interior.
Yes. I think.
Is anybody?
Sunny, have you, are you ready?
No, that's not the.
Interior, Interior is asking you, anybody, it's been appointed to write it down.
Okay, 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 uh, no.
Someone is writing, yes.
Sistan K, you can go on.
Okay.
Ebon, Ebon State is in that.
Let me get.
Sistan K.
My financial director is writing down.
Uh, Sistan K can do also.
I'll get them. Okay. Mr. Love. Yes, they did not, they are supposed, the people organizing, they should have. Realized that they need to keep a record. Of this.
They are doing that, they are doing that.
Yeah, but it wasn't, what happened to those that when we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten donations already, do you have the records?
We have records.
Okay.
Sunny, you can go ahead and play for us, Sunny, later Eboni just come on stage.
I think when Sunny is ready, he will.
Okay, uh, we can go to just move on, um. Whenever I'm ready, he will come and play for us, so I'm going to call all, uh, call Eboni. Based on how we structure our state. I call upon uh. Uh, Easy Region. I can come up and announce. Uh, the donation that all the counties donated. Easy Region, over to you.
What's the name of the Easy Region?
Um. Think Frank. Frank, are you here?
He may not be here with Frank. As a name.
Okay.
That's Easy Region here, who is a co-host.
Okay.
But he is muted, he or she is muted.
I'm in place. Easy Regions, open their mouth. Then if there is. But if there is. Is it coming out?
He's not speaking yet.
Okay, I have an interaction, so I call up. I, I call um, Equal Region, Equal Region, over to you.
Hello, can I hear you?
Yeah, we can hear you, okay, equal hold on, equal hold on.
This is Easy Region, Easy Region. Can you hear me, this is Easy Region.
I can hear you, go ahead, hold on.
Okay, uh, greeting to our APM. And the Eastern Region admin and as well, Eboni State admin. I hereby represent Easy Region. Based on the. Declaration and the cola notes. I start by the county. Yodo County is hereby pledged one hundred and fifty eje.
One hundred and fifty.
Next, yes, one hundred and fifty eje. Next, Eboni County. Pledge one hundred and fifty eje. Next. Easy County. One hundred and fifty eje. Next. Ekumeni County. One hundred and twenty eje. Next, Ibergu County. One hundred and thirty eje. To support the movement. Of the Eastern Region and the Dessa Respiration at large.
Thank you.
That's what I have for Easy.
What's the total?
The total.
To be seven hundred.
Yes. Yes, exactly.
Thank you so much, Easy County for.
It's seven hundred thousand eje.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Thank you so much, Easy County, for this wonderful presentation.
Seven hundred thousand eje, seven hundred thousand eje.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Darlo.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much, uh, Easy Region, uh, for this wonderful presentation. We are looking forward also to call uh, Equal Region. Equal Region, the floor is open, over to you, sir.
Good evening, everybody in the house.
Welcome.
Good evening. Yes, I represented the Equal Region as Eboni is being structured. Here from the counties, according to the counties. We have a leak. Eight, well, eighty-seven thousand four hundred eje. Ameku County. Sixty thousand eje. Inimeku County. One hundred and forty-three thousand eje. Ekomakakanti. One hundred thousand eje. Etarakanti. Eight thousand eje. Making total of four hundred and seventy, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand eje. This our little contribution to support our chief admin. Who know how to play the game best, in the name of the Lord, we glorify this night in the name of Jesus.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. Equal Region for this uh, wonderful presentation. Permit me to call Eza Region to come on stage, Eza Region, over to you. Eza Region.
Greetings. Greetings, everyone.
Welcome.
I thank you all, may God bless all of you.
Bless you too.
Yeah. Uh, according to Eza Region donation. Uh, we donated according to counties. Uh, Ameka County. Donated seventy-three thousand five hundred. Eje. Umeza Kaka County donated one hundred and ten thousand four hundred eje. Umeza Aloris County donated one hundred and fourteen thousand eje. Idembia County. Donated one hundred and forty-one thousand eje. Oboji County. Donated one hundred and ten thousand eje. Total is six hundred and eleven thousand four hundred.
Wow.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much, uh, thank you so much, Eza Region for this uh, great achievement. May Elohim guide you guys, as I'm talking to you now. All the three corner of the regions of Eboni States, there are numbers up to. Hundred and something people gathering together and listening to this program. Permit me also to. Call what we call our network gadgets.
Mm-hmm.
According to the structure that we place in Eboni. According to the structure that we place in Abony, which could not allow our enemies to break Abony. Started by our parliaments. We have Saint Teresa Parliament, donated thirty thousand Aj. We have Onneke Parliament, twenty thousand Aj. We have Equal Parliament, thirty thousand Aj. We have Honorable New Parliament, twenty thousand Aj. We have, uh, Isheka Parliament, twenty thousand Aj. Total of one hundred and twenty thousand Aj. Um, I want to use this opportunity also to appreciate, uh, the individuals who supported this town hall meeting, which I may not call all their names, but the total figure of the individuals who donated, the total amount is eighty-five Aj. And we are looking forward to make more progress in this journey.
Eighty-five.
May Elohim protect and guide all of us. So, um, this is what Abony have for now, here. We'll come back again. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
People keep repeating.
My mic is. My mic is dead. Yes, uh, this is what, uh, Abony has to, um, present to you guys. Thank you, don't do something. Bless you.
Thank you so much, Abony State, that was awesome. Alright, fellow Biafrans, we are still on the. We are still picking the kola, so all the states in the Eastern Region are picking kola except. State admins, any official or citizen, you can raise your hand and represent your state. And I have a hand here, Akajako Nobah, over to you.
Thank you, COA, yeah, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay. Yeah, good thing, fellow Biafrans, please permit me to stand on the system protocols. Yeah, I done, I already made my personal donation to our COA, but I want to support my state, uh, state admin, other state with a sum of twenty thousand Aj. I was sent to COA tomorrow morning.
Don't ask.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can support your state. That is where you sit. So the floor is open, the, the, the picking of the kola, everyone must participate in it. Look at our table, it is very rich, respect the table by picking one, at least one thing to nourish your body from the table. We want to see hands up before we move to the next item on the agenda. Alright, Onyeze, Abony State Admin, over to you.
Thank you, my brother, thank you. Good evening, everyone, lovers of freedom. I am Onyeze from Abony State. I am picking the kola with a sum of five thousand Aj. And using this opportunity at the same time to invite all, all Biafrans to the Central Region Meeting, which will be coming up on the twenty-third, which is next Sunday. Thank you and God bless you.
God bless you.
You. Thank you, Onyeze, Abony State, five thousand.
Yes, so Victor Nonsa again, your hand is up. Over to you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Onyeze, bring down your hand.
Thank you very much. Um, I want to use this opportunity to call on my brothers and sisters, most especially in Portugal. Portugal is not just a small country, we, we know we are few in Portugal. But, uh, I know that we have more and more Biafrans in Portugal. The reason why I'm going to use this video to extend this message to all Biafrans in Portugal. If you are sleeping, it's the time for you to wake up. Uh, with all due respect, I am representing Portugal, I am the, one of the, I am the representative of Portugal. And, uh, without wasting much of our time, uh, I'm going to support from my own state, which I am my brother, my own country. I'm going to support with fifty Aj. But I'm using this opportunity to let her know that I cannot do it alone. I need your support, we need your support, just like every other. If I am not here, then who would be? You, or I, human, I am a human, we are all Biafrans, nobody is bigger than you. This is the right time to key in for what we are. We fight for freedom, it's not giving, what is taking, you can see, I'm not sick, none of us here either. I will not waste much of my time, I've given myself my mission, but this is a team of collective efforts, it's not for one person. God bless you, thank you.
Thank you, God bless you. Yes, fellow Biafran, look at the table of our meeting, the kola not, pieces of kola not, there are too many. There are over eighty million pieces of kola not. Enough to go round the entire forty state of Biafra. So, we need to bring it down to zero. So we need more hands up, over to you, United Kingdom. Victor Nonsa.
COA, COA, that's a violation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Nonsa, you finished talking and you did not bring down your hand, so you attracted a fine, pay your ticket.
Alright, uh, it's very, very important to respect the law and respect the, the rules. So I'm going to, uh, object, be fined with five Aj, thank you.
Thank you. You're a good Biafran.
Yes.
Now we have some hands, so let us take them please, without delay, United Kingdom, over to you.
Okay, so, are we, we're now, uh, general taking of kola not?
Yes, general taking of kola not.
Alright.
For your state.
Oh, okay, so I'm Allo State, alright, so, I'm on behalf of our law, uh, I will take, uh, um, with hundred thousand Aj. Yeah, for status, so I'll write it for myself and remit it to COA, yeah, immediately. Alright, so Allo State, hundred thousand Aj. Okay.
Wow.
Thank you, uncle.
Thank you. Alright, are you done?
Uh, yep.
Your hand is still up, is there a thumb up?
No, she's no thumb up. She knows she break the rule, she pay a fine.
Okay, 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 so Techno, come on twelve, over to you.
Okay. Hello. Greetings. Biafrans, I greet you.
Welcome.
Yeah, I'm from our Huku State, um, supporting my representative, picking the kola not with a sum of thirty thousand Aj.
Okay.
So, that is, I greet everybody, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, K Techno, K Amon twelve, are you in the Huku State platform?
Yes. Yes, but I cannot unmute my phone and, uh, you know what, we are battling here in our Huku, so that's why we are just, uh, seems as if we are not, uh, doing something, I suppose, but we are getting something on the ground right now.
Okay, go to the Huku platform, under Brigi, drop me a message there, you will search for COA. Leave a message for me, okay?
Okay.
Alright, don't worry about what, nothing, we are not defeated.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so we have a stop. To take more of the kola not, and we have Maybe from Alanso State, over to you.
Yeah, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, oh, welcome.
Yeah, COA, thank you so much. I want to take the opportunity to thank our, uh, APM. APM, welcome to Eastern Region. Uh, greeting to all the Brigi Cabinet that are here present. Thank you so much. We are seeing all the, all your handwork, uh, is playing out. Even the blind can testify that. So without taking our time, on behalf of, uh, Alanso State, I'm picking a kola with a sum of ten thousand Aj.
Yes, so.
Thank you so much, we move.
We move, thank you, Alanso, and I've written it down.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Alanso, we need more hands up. We need more hands up to take the kola, remember that we are in the Eastern Region of Biafra Confederation Town Hall Meeting. You know what it represents? It is the very place that the sun rises. So, it is over to you to make the sun that is rising shine from the east. Alright, Nama, watchin' okay, over.
They won't know. They will.
They will be the amazing water, APM. APM, this regional town, town hall meeting, it's a wonderful thing that, uh, I've gained more experience. I've learned a lot on this town hall meeting. I thank, uh, the people that bring the idea. At this, it have bring, it have begin to resurrect counties. So I'm happy and I pray that it will continue like this. On behalf of, uh, Allo State, I'm, uh, picking the kola with ten thousand Aj, they won.
They will, Nama. Thank you.
Nama.
Allo, ten thousand Aj, okay. Thank you, Nama, Darlo. Everything is.
That guy done, nice you.
Alright, keep making it happen, we are still picking the kola. We are about sixty-five here in the Zoom. Everyone in the Zoom needs to take kola not, and also take away. You eat in and you take away. It is allowed. The table is so rich, don't go away tonight with kola not. It is very, very important, back to the meeting, respect the tradition. Remember, it is called traditional kola not, so we are doing it traditionally. Respect your traditions, we are picking kola not. I need to see hands up, please, honorable Biafran, we need to see hands up. Alright, Duzia, over to you. Duzia, go ahead.
Alright, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, fellow Biafran, good evening, Martin Prime Minister, my good chief, his excellency. Uh, good evening, the Honorable Minister of Information and Communication, the Huku Condemn of our time, my son, my father. The Undefeatable, uh, Minister of Information and Communication. It is pathetic for the enemies and those who want to make freedom fighting as the occupation and the profession. That it is only two men that hold them, hold the ransom upon all their professorship and the doctorship. They're pinned down and never to rise again. I salute Martin Prime Minister. I salute the Honorable Minister of Information and Communication. I salute the leadership of the Biafran, the Fatoga, many homelands, of which so many of them are presented here, from the Secretary of State, my COA, the Minister of Interior, I'm so nice, and all admins and county admins, district mayors, and every one of you. You've made it happen and each day we will grow. The number we are here today, or the number we are in our counties and various districts and states cannot determine how we shall be before the end of this year. It is all about projections in a mathematical way. So, fellow Biafrans from all over the world, depending on time zones, wherever you are doing this Zoom meeting from. You can find, you can attest yourself that this is not, uh, a moment in as usual. Where you have town hall meetings, see US, in Texas, in California, other states. In Germany, you could eat tiam and you wear your shi- tango to display your, your regalia there. But inside you is hiding your stupidity. This is a time to flush out our stupidity and taking in the reserve of ours. This is not time for political correctness. It is not time to speak Queen English. It is not time to please anybody. This is a time to displease everybody and make sure you please the spirit of Biafra, regardless of who is involved. Chief Chukwemeka of the Megu Juku of blessed memory, I went to the leader. Used his father's money to defend the nation. Somebody got made fortunes of it, became millionaire even after the war. In the same sense, the misled leader of the Najadetan uh um emancipation movement. Men, Chiefs Asari dot com. Put his life on the verge and somebody did it, still come up and made a fortune from it. No matter what Asari has today, it's just a pin of what he's supposed to have. Some people use it as a business on airlines and other businesses. How can you be profiting from your own freedom? How? Somebody wants to still divide into fracas into fractional services. I will salute the land of the rising sun in the Biafra land, which is the eastern part of the Biafra region. I will salute the executives and all who made it possible for us to gather here today. Yes, initially when the issue of regional government came up, regional structure. They kicked that, they wrote to our prime minister in Finland. To assert his uh position on the regional structure. But you know what, Biafra is a moving train.
Yes.
No one can stop us. For so ever good, I reminded our prime minister, sometimes I said, I said, you told us that. Do not stop a system that works. And he agreed with me, yes. I said, okay, stay aside, don't interrupt the system that it works for now. Okay, Chuku system is the system that it works. Be good time. Which I'm not saying, the Chuku karma, Boston is the best. And now we have okay Chuku in our midst, what is you guys problem? The Chuku that is, that karma is not in our midst. Do you want to kill your remake? He who kill his remake, kill his this. And my salute goes to Eboni State, the most structured state in the entire Biafra land. I want to ask them. Yes. I am stateless, but I come from the state, but there are many Biafra state. And I was apart of one with that indestructibility. With the uh um uh formidableness with the sum of twenty thousand euro or twenty thousand AJ. So the admin, the admin is so much in his correct positions. That's no admins that live now in this minute. That challenge his structure. And the challenge I'm putting to all the five regions of Biafra. All the regional heads, this is a challenge to you. Replicate Eboni State. Replicate the state of Eboni under the leadership of a wonderful minister. Is a man that know how to do. My respect to you sir. Then I want to remind fellow Biafrans all over the world. That the destiny of Biafra is not in anyone's hands. It is in the hand of the Almighty Chukoke Kabian. To him who give gifts. And to him who validate gifts, he, it is, there is one thing to, to be giving gifts. And there's nothing for the person that give you the gift of validate the gift that he gave to you. Don't behave as you have known, your professorship, your doctorship, you have a master's degree, you have a bachelor's degree. H and D, N I A N C E and whatever cannot justify your trajectory of progress in life. What justifies it is your, I'll continue to say you must be dedicated and applied, self-discipline. In this, I've seen in this our God's time, okay Chukunkere. And let me remind the Biafrans that since the mona uh uh since, since the inception of this struggle. Have never joined left wing. Anywhere success goes, that is the right direction.
That's true.
I cannot start naming them from the time of Uchemofo having issue with the Mamazoo. I was in the forefront, I was in the meeting with Uchemofo, I was in the meeting with the Mamazoo, we know what we did. I choose the right path, Uchemofo was used by God to stood against these monsters. At the point, Uchemofo started misbehaving. There was another right wing that he created that betrayed him, that gave birth to China Samuru. Uchemofo created with a wing that betrayed him himself. And when our prime minister came on board, as a new person in the struggle who joined in two, twenty nineteen, we guided him. With every wisdom that is in us, and he never made a mistake, and he chose wisely. Even in his choosing, there are foolish ones among him. Like the, 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 uh former Minister of Defense, like uh 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 his COS, that he finished the left wing in his group. Today they are separated and we are left with one singular individual called God's Time, okay Chukunkere. And then they go, okay Chuku karma, follow God's time. And your time shall meet you. This is my advice to all admins, go back to work. It's time to work, and any admin that is not working, that is therefore gossiping will be removed, I try to leave out. Notice. It does not matter who you are, if we are five states, let's remain five states, if a ten state, we remain ten state. But well-functioned and formidable states. Thank you, my prime minister, thank you, my servant, thank you, everyone, cautious people within the Zoom, I use my mic, they were.
They were. They were. Oh sir, thank you. Okay.
Alright, we are. We are still picking cola. As I always say, if you take a look at our table of the meeting, there's enough there to go around. We don't have one, I'm one, we have not, we have African salad. And I have something like yams that are roasted. We have Osoji, we have Angara. Please, Biafrans, let us make this occasion memorable indeed by by the foreign table of the meeting. It is for all of us, so we want to see how more hands up before we move to the next item on agenda. We want to see more hand. More hands. Okay, Reg and Furi, over to you, watching again, Reg.
Okay, they were watching again, thank you very much, moderator. Greetings to you, Biafrans of our world. Greetings to you, my honorable Minister of uh of, of Information, honorable Sonny Aparawa. The Okoko Dem of our days, the best information uh minister that any nation will have. And we'll just go to sleep, go and rest, thank you very much, I appreciate everything you do for us. Greetings to my honorable Minister, uh my honorable APM, His Excellency, okay Chukunkere. Greetings to all our leaders from time past to this representate to all the cabinet ministers of the Biafra Republic Government in Eza. You are the best, like I told you, you are not getting your flowers now, but the best flower you are going to get is the freedom of Biafra, the freedom of the people. Um from greetings to all the military, the Biafra Defense Forces, from the highest to the lowest. These are the men and women that are defending our babies, women and children, our civilian populace, especially the Christians. Upon this genocide have been declared, greetings to you, Biafra Defense Forces. And to all the international community that are speaking about the plight of Christians and of Biafra, Biafrans. Really want to say thank you so much, uh representing from Isoko Urubu State of Biafra. Uh I'll be supporting today's fundraising for the defense of babies, women and children and the freedom of Biafra with the sum of like thousand AJ. And uh yes, and I also want to let our people know that uh freedom is our right. Freedom is your right, freedom is my right, that's why I will sign on by saying.
Get up, stand up.
Yes, sir.
Stand up for your right. Get up, stand up, Biafrans, don't give up, Biafran. Just get up, stand up. Stand up for your right, Biafrans, get up, stand up. Don't give up, Biafran. Don't give up, Biafran. We will never give up the fight. We will never give up, Biafran. We will never give up life. We will never give up our freedom. We will never give up our culture. Don't give up, Biafran, rise up, don't give up, Biafran, wake up. Isoko, wake up. People, wake up. Biafrans, wake up. Get up, get up, get up, get up. Get up, get up, get up now. Don't give up, Biafran. Don't give up, Biafran. We will never give up our life. We will never give up our culture. Okay, Biafran, thank you very much, I use my mic.
Thank you.
Reg.
You donation. Reg and Furi, you didn't allow. You can re- make your fundraising, but remember that we are picking cola, alright? We move to Ochendu Wabiafra. Ochendu Wabiafra, Ochendu, over to you. Ochendu, you have raised your hand before. We called you, but you didn't speak, now you are not speaking again. Alright, we move to James Adenu African Red, honorable, over to you, sir.
Yes, a very good evening, Eastern Region Biafra land.
Good evening.
Appreciate you.
Good evening.
It's our home meeting, you have organized to bring our people together. Every one of us, that freedom that we desire so much. Um I appreciate our APM, our Information Minister. And every cabinet member, honorable here and indeed the whole of Biafra, I appreciate you all. I also appreciate our uh Minister of Success that just spoke. And I thank him very much for not standing on the left wing. And I want to use this opportunity to also tell people. Biafrans all over the world, don't ever find yourself in the left wing. Always follow where the light is shining, and the light is where I stand. I want to pick uh that uh what the table that our COS is talking about. There is the particular meal I like, I don't have the times in Bongo, I call Bongo, that's ex-country. Ex, ex Nigeria, there is a particular thing, is some, that's what's that, but I will, you understand it, is some, that is some, that is, that's why you normally saw. That is the one I am picking now, and I am picking it with twenty AJ. Just that one, I'm not greedy, just one, it's long time I tested it and I am picking it now directly from that table. And I am taking it now.
Even if. Thank you. It, it is enough to go around as many, okay? They were, please, the table is already.
You can greetings, greetings, my ministers. Greetings, um I'm so sorry, I was trying to mute myself, but it was not going through. But thank God I'm able to, I hope I'm being heard.
Yes, you are.
Okay, uh um good afternoon, my APM, Mazi Oggetukunkere. I really thank God for your life, for what God is using you to do. And I also thank uh our Minister of Information, Chief Sonny Aparawa. You are indeed God-sent to this uh 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 generation. And I also thank all the ministers who are doing one or two things to make sure that we keep this movement going. May Chukoke Kabian will continue to bless each and every one of you and the donors. Every one of you who are supporting in one way or the other financially or whatever you're doing to make sure this uh cause is moving forward. It's only God that will reward each and every one of us, and I believe that the only reward God will reward us is Biafra and nothing else. So I'm using this medium to also, um I think one of my brother from Ed State has um picked the color note, I also want to add to what he contributed with the sum of fifty AJ, may God bless us.
And we move to MLK Rap Briggy. Mazi MLK, over to you, sir.
Alright, thank you, thank you, uh COA, um thank you very much, uh. I also thank everyone that everyone that has con- contributed to uh to make this. I'm having trouble um opening my uh. Okay, there we go, wait a minute, I thought it did, one, one moment, please, one moment. There, yes, sir, yes, sir, thank you, sir, thank you, my Minister of Information. So yeah, I am, I am giving a lot of credit to the ministers. Uh in the de facto, uh uh all the state uh representatives who are who of eastern region of Biafra land, who have uh you know, come together to uh make this a success. I also greet my uh acting Prime Minister. Uh His Excellency, Honorable Ogay. I seize the opportunity also to uh greet uh our BDF. You know, our BDF, they are the backbone of this struggle. In fact, they are at the tip of the spear. So I, I duff my hat to them. I also thank all the ministers in the house. Uh and those that have spoken, especially uh chairman of the Defense Council. Uh, Honorable Success. I thank our uh. Uh.
Okay.
Past leaders.
Yeah.
I thank our past leaders. Uh. Generals, Effiong and Ojuwu. Uh. It is now that we realize what they were going through. Many of us had no clue what those two went through. So it's coming to light. What they had to put up with. And I'm grateful to their contribution. I also, on the same note, uh, congratulate and thank Mazie. Nam de Kano Onyendu. Who I believe. From day one that this is our Daniel in the lion's den. Uh, I knew that it wasn't gonna be easy for the zoo to carry out what they want to do. But again, I stay in prayer. And I stay in prayer. And I'm thankful that the Most High has kept him. Also, thank the Most High for our Prime Minister. His Excellency, Honorable Simon Ekba. Uh, who is being persecuted in Finland. Uh, and I'm convinced now that Finland is, is. Is now shaking, also in panic, I may say. Uh, you see, uh, we've come at a point where, you know, we, we say we crossed the Rubicon. Well, we have, yes, we have. And when you cross the Rubicon, you know, usually what the next thing that happens is that you take, you take down whatever led you to cross it, and you, you take down. The bridge you take down, if it's a rope, you take it down, you bring it down, everything. In that sense, we can go back. So we, we are on a determined and serious journey. Uh, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to know that we are close to our destination. And um, the closer we get. The more elusive it would appear. But that's usually how it is. Uh, some people will continue to, to mark us. Even when the whole world is talking about us. If any of us look back, say like, I say four, five years ago. We, we, we struggled to get the world to listen, to hear us. Where now? Uh. We are, we are no longer in the, in the, in the shades. You know, and the world knows exactly what's happening regardless of all the lies. The, the zoo country is trying to sell. So I thank all those who have persevered. And remain steadfast in this struggle. And I encourage you. To encourage others you come across to join us. Because let me tell you, uh, this freedom is intoxicating. You will find out. When we get there. So I would like to pick uh, one of these, uh, they look like garden eggs. Is that what they are? I'd like to pick one of them. Uh, with a hundred AJ. And uh. And I say, thank you again to all the administrators in the De Facto. Government. And uh, we'll come back. I yield my mic. Thank you.
Thank you, honorable. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Redman.
Thank you, honorable. We are now getting closer to the next item on agenda. Let us take Mary. Mary, your hand is up. Over to you. Mary, are you there?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, APM. Good evening, COA. Good evening, our leader. Good evening, lover of freedom, everyone here. Yes, I just want to pick uh, the garden egg here. For Eastern Region, because uh, our APM is within the, uh, physical house. So I want to pick uh, the garden egg for ten AJ, uh, ten thousand AJ, AJ. For our APM, because you need to, when you come to people's house, you know, in our place. With the, you know, we contain our visitor. So behalf of Irohibom. The uh, garden egg, ten thousand AJ, and then. For our, I mean, our, I mean for Irohibom, for your feet and uh, ten thousand AJ. So for supporting Irohibom, that is twenty thousand AJ. Thank you very much. I mute my mic.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you, Mary.
Ominkiruka, good evening. Oh, thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, Jack. Okay, we go to Jack. Mazie Jack, over to you. Jack. Jack Omuches, you are there. Over to you. Mary, you can put down your hand. We have police here.
Police. Mary. You already got your ticket. Please pay your ticket. Mary. Oh.
I will add uh, five uh, 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 yeah.
Five thousand AJ.
Five who?
I will add two thousand AJ.
Okay. She said two thousand. She said two thousand.
Alright, say it, sir, I can hear it. You have no longer youngster.
Sorry, oh.
Alright.
It's a Mary, talk to her.
Alright, okay, the dog are calling.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll write it down for you now, two thousand.
Yes, I will, tomorrow I will send it for our info, our Information Minister. He will see. Yes, mommy, mommy love. Good evening.
Thank you very much.
Yes, our policeman.
Next time, be more careful, okay, dear?
Yes, I will.
Because first offense carries a small penalty, second offense, it becomes. Um, daily breath disobedience and then their fee goes up.
It's good. I will. Thank you.
Alright.
Okay, Jack, are you with us?
He is.
Are you having it? Over to you. There's no time to wait, to do it. Jack is having issues. He's raising double hand.
That should be Jack from UK, um. Yeah.
He's only one.
Sunny, any help you can render to.
Can you hear me?
He is, he is oxygened. Yes, so.
Okay, sorry, the mute, the meeting was not showing, so I couldn't mute myself. Uh, good evening, our APM, um. Let me, pardon me to remain on uh, already established protocol. Um, I thank everybody here, my fellow citizens of Biafra. I thank all of us here gathered here today. Um, I want to take uh, cola notes. With um, twenty AJ. Uh, but before I go, I just want to um. Drop a food for thought for us, share those of us who are not supporting the freedom. Who are still on defense. Um, imagine that um. When we get Biafra. In every museum in Biafra Land, those of us who have slaved, suffered, donated. Contributed in one way or the other, to make sure that this freedom, that this Biafra is gotten. And in every museum in Biafra Land, our names and pictures. Have been placed in all of them. So that generations to come, our unborn, even when we are gone. Our names, our faces, echoed across every part of Biafra Land. And even the tourists that will be coming across the world, will come and see great men and women of Biafra. Who made it possible that their generation are enjoying what they are enjoying that particular time. Imagine that your picture is there, that your name is captured. This is a food for thought, because this particular period is the period where we should all unite together and make this thing possible. We all want to go home. We all want to live in our beloved land. And that is why I will end it with this song. And everybody should have this song in mind to ask, to answer this question. Will your name, will my name, will your name is there? Will your name, will your name, will your name be there? My name, will your name, will my name be there? In the holy book of Biafra, will your name be there? Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. My wonderful contribution. We are going to go to the next.
Jack. Before you run away, the camera, after you.
Okay, so let us have care of Israel. Over to you.
You to pay his candle.
I think yes, this is.
Well, I will catch him. He is too. I will send him after him.
He can run, but he can't.
Go and disappear.
He can run, but he can't hide.
No, not in Biafra Land.
There were no.
ID, so we can find you. You are not in the zoo. So the earlier you clear your name, the better. Yeah, he's here. Yeah, come on, brother. Yes, so.
Okay, uh, okay, sorry, I didn't know that break the rules. Uh, okay, I will add another two AJ.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, there were no.
Thank you, Nelson.
Okay, let me take care of this because I, I don't like getting the ticket.
Alright.
Uh, so I thank you, thank you everybody, uh, especially our men on ground. Um, like our brothers have been saying. You guys, you know, your name will be written. It's already written actually, because we are, nobody appointed you guys, but the Most High himself. Appointed you for the wonderful work you are doing. All the uh, men on, uh, you, all you, all our men in, in the De Facto government. That are going through the brunt of the whole thing. And of course, you talk about our APM. And uh, the cabinets. Um, and then we talk about our Onyendu. The saying, you know, Hason, like he says, if you want to do something right, you do it by your own self. So we can see the great successes that he's making now. And then we, you know, we have our Prime Minister Simon Eba. And everyone here, of us here, who have been contributing. I would encourage you to, you know, keep the faith. You know, keep the faith, get to the end so that you get the crown. Because the end is near, as you can see. Nobody needs to tell you that we are almost at the end. The end is near. So don't let anybody throw you out, don't anything distract you. Just keep on going. Don't want to get to, almost to the station and then you are, you fall off. Okay, so that, I would like to take some collars. Um. Take the garden egg and the cola note on behalf of Arizona and on behalf of Ekemba. Uh, let me take uh, fifty AJ to take the cola. And then I'll come back later. Thank you very much. Thank you, Aparawa. You are, you are really blessed. And of course, our APM, you are all very blessed. Thank you. Okay, begin, your, your hand is up.
Yes, so.
Okay, go ahead.
Biafrans, there were no.
There were. Marulile, there were no. Eastern Region.
Yes.
Ekelem wono.
There were.
Ele promaya. De luche. Um. Asundah, baka ra baka, Iheka raheka. I don't know what they did with it, but it's staring at me. Yes, so, um, isubangaradema. And some are wakere. Um, I can meet time with people, special people. And those two special people. Uh, my APM. And my Information Minister. Those are the guys I'm going to enjoy what I just picked with. On our way back, because uh, somebody said it could be lie, it could be true. That APM showed up in Air Force One and. I'm going to go back with him because he don't look, live too far from me. So on our way back, we'll be munching on those things I picked now.
Alright, man.
Uh, and it's gonna cost me. Three thousand one hundred and fifteen thousand AJ.
Alright, man.
That will have, have made an error. It's supposed to be AJ. But since I said the J, uh, J, instead of AJ. That's gonna cost me. Now, everybody listen, because when you take this rule, the same rule applies to you. I don't look face. Okay, so I'm gonna pay a fine for that thing, saying AJ instead of AJ, alright? Now, I know APM is gonna talk. But they are delaying the talk and I just don't have patience to wait, okay? Um. Because on Iden pata patesi lazy. So I'm gonna hurry up and appreciate whatever he is going to say. With another three thousand six hundred and fifteen AJ.
Wow.
So that's a total of seven thousand two hundred and thirty AJ. Uh-huh, now. For my own error. Which I'm going to pay. That will cost me. Hmm, maybe, let's say, two thousand AJ. For saying the wrong thing. So now, it's gonna be. Seven thousand four hundred and thirty AJ. On my tab. There were no. And I look at my hand, because if I don't, that's another attraction of fine.
There were. There were.
There were.
Thank you. I'm the lord, uh, can you have no water, friend? But she can be the one to. Do not accept one. Uh, because she, she does. It would be somebody, someone else here. Let her know what her friend is. Thank you.
AP, what, then AP, I'm thinking I didn't hear him.
APM, sing a fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Over to you, Madame Muki.
Hmm, hey, hey, Minister Love, bro. Hey, I can't remember, I had to carry out, I'm not making that, alright, um, Minister Love.
Yeah.
Remember, Muki, remember the law is blind.
Oh, it's true. Hmm, okay.
Yeah, Biafrans.
Exactly, so no nationality at all, alright.
No man.
Hmm, okay, so to dedicate on Minister Love's predicament, yes. Um, and then nothing less than a, a twenty a gem, twenty a gemma fine uh, from her. Yes, Minister Love, and what do you have to say about this?
So now my fine will be twenty a gemma?
Yes.
Alright. And I'm a roka, I'm a gili, I'm a under the river, no, no, no.
Alright.
No problem, thank you for that.
There were, there were, there were.
Hold on, APM. Ma.
Uh, the.
Thank you.
Okay. We need to speed up the meeting.
Okay.
We can. They're most of the item at the table. At least within next two hours or thereabout. Yeah. Been a long time picking the color. And we, we will continue to pick, those whose hands are up. We will. Color, I mean to say.
Hmm.
When you go fundraising a law, you do your fundraising and you pick your color. The table is too rich and, um, uh, any who is allowed. You go to the table and serve yourself as much as you can consume. But right now, we will have to bring the man of the moment to the podium. The man who has been carrying on his shoulder his heavy weight of freedom.
Yes.
The freedom of Biafran people at the moment. Many called him, didn't know his name, oh my gosh, but I call him him. Kinyuoi. Kinyuoi one. Now, Biafran, as well, and it is no other person but is excellent. The acting Prime Minister of Biafran Republic Government in exile, Honorable Ogechukwu. Your words sound.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, my brother, your son. Thank you for good work, what you are doing. I'm gonna be taking, um, grand for twenty pounds.
Muki, what did he say?
Life is a process. Twenty a gemma.
No matter how you go about it. Maso okechukunkere, omale changoke. The Biafran Republic Government Exile Finance Minister is homely campaigning for global Biafran financial support. For the purpose of Finland Convention, Biafran Defense Forces are redecoration related activities. I appreciate all Biafrans who have been supporting our liberation movement. I also urge everyone to massively support more than ever, especially in these critical times. Oh, my fellow lovely great Biafrans. Let's come together and support our Prime Minister, Massey Simon Eba. Who is currently working tirelessly to hand over our freedom to us this year, twenty twenty four. Obonye, obonye, kengya kasa lo no. Freedom is coming, yeah, yeah. Yo, 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 yo. Maso okechukunkere. Salute every Biafran specialist. Here, here. Okechiyo. Okechukuka ma. Okechukuka ina yo no, 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 no. Okechukuka ma. Onyama na kiti kiti ba fulonunu. Okechukuka ma. Welu ndidi chukuka sebele. Okechukuka ma. Oh, okechiyo. Okechukuka ma. Maso okechukunkere neke lunu. Okechukuka ma. Okechukuka ina yo no, no, no. Okechukuka ma. Okechukuka ina yo na yasi. Okechukuka ma. There is no magic to progress and success in life. Life gives back what you give to it. It takes a man who believes in himself to create wealth. So keep working hard and never lose hope in what you believe in. Ayakata. Life is not easy.
Sorry.
Make it take and jejeo. I want to use this special opportunity to recognize great team of Mekogoku. I can't also forget General Philip Effion. Okama Dalosaw. Kamche taka no men on the ground. Um, omao kobiwe. Any na foakolo. Airborne. The fact of government in homeland. Chisianika. A special recognition to every Biafran who have been supporting from Tewana. May you know him continue to flourish you in your different endeavors. This is. Mazinandikano, oh amadike, who are not Biafran, egadi. The Prime Minister, obatobiere. Okechukunkere simukelekiyo, okama. Okechiyo. Okechukuka ma. Okechukuka ina yo no, 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 no. Okechukuka ma. Onyama na kiti kiti ba fulonunu. Okechukuka ma. Welu ndidi chukuka sebele. Okechukuka ma. Oh, okechiyo. Okechukuka ma. Mama biko yo gole sa. Okechukuka ma. Okechukuka ina yo no, no, no. Okechukuka ma. Okechukuka ina yo na yasi. Okechukuka ma. Ayole, ayiga konola ya role no. Owi bole, che taka na lubafo. One plus one is two, two plus two is four, you know. Onye puruchu yusaka no, 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 no. Joy, joy, joy. Don't give up. One day, it's so close. It's so close. Okechukuka ma. Never you give up, no, no, no. Okechukuka ma. Believe in your dreams, brother. Okechukuka ma. Never you say, no, no, no. Okechukuka ma. Okechukuka ina yo no. Okechukuka ma. Never you down your bed, no, no. Okechukuka ma. Keep your head up, keep on fighting. Okechukuka ma. Ayabalala, ayabalalodo. Okechukuka ma. A big shout out to Maso okechukunkere. I salute you, my P, Massey Simon Eba. Life is sweet when you're patient. Ah. The greatest shout out goes to the media team, great talent. There were no. Life is a process. No matter how you go about it. Maso okechukunkere, omale chang.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Minister of Information, Massey Soni Aparawan. Thank you, you and the entire media team. We appreciate everything you are doing for the Biafran people, for your freedom, for my freedom, for all of us freedom. Remember our leader Ojuku. Accompanied by Philip Effion. Philip Effion once said, if the Nigerian government, if the Nigerian terrorist state, if the S Nigeria did not treat the Biafran children right. Now we will rise up. Here we go. Minister M N K, North and South American Rep have risen up. All of us here have risen up. The Eastern Region Admins and Executives, they have all risen up. Non-So here have risen up. All the honorable Ministers, Rep and Admin. We have all risen up. Risen up to do what? To fight for our freedom. To fight for our survival. We are not fighting for fantasy, rather for us to live. Those before us, they fought like a man. They fight very hard. And without the initiative that they have taken, we're not gonna be here today. They open our eyes. They enlighten us. Our leaders before us, they educate us and they gave us the reason why we should fight for our freedom. In Biafran today, there is ongoing war. The Nigerian terrorist state, the S Nigeria, they have not stopped fighting the Biafran Christians. They are planning the same goal of their father, Usmanam Furu. For them to exalamize us, to take over our land, to overrun us. They are doing everything they can to achieve that their goal. The question is that we Biafrans of today, which generation of today, are we going to allow them achieve their goal? Instead of us to come together to fight for this that we believe in. Instead of us to come to fight for what we believe in as Biafrans. Rather some are chasing shadow. Rather some are fighting us, that is fighting to free our people. Rather some tell us to be their enemy. It don't matter what is true upon us. It don't matter how much they sabotage us. That will not change the fact that we will be fighting until Biafra is free. All of our social media, instead of some Biafrans fighting to free us, to free for our freedom. Rather, they choose to destroy our beautiful name. They choose to destroy our personality. They choose to work with the S Nigeria and the Islamic terrorist states. It's time we unite together and fight our one common enemy. The S Nigeria, the Islamic jihadist terrorists are called them blood sucking demons. That is who they are. A group of people or ethnic group of people that have chosen to kill innocent children, baby's mother, father's uncle, beheading people like they are slaughtering animal. These people are evil and barbaric. Any country in the world that supports this evil terrorist state of Nigeria that have planned and colluded with the Islamic jihadist terrorists and the Fulanists to fight the children of light, the Biafran Christian. That country itself is also a terrorist. Whether it's United States of America, whether it is Russia, whether it is Israel, China, any country that work with this terrorist state is a terrorist. It's time for countries of the world, those that believe in humanity, to practice what they preach. If you preach that you are fighting terrorism for no reason, you should support terrorism. If you condemn terrorism, why fund terrorists indirectly? Biafran people have been killed in millions. These terrorists have made Biafran land a place where they harvest organs of Biafrans and ship to China. Another evil country called China, very evil. When the leader of the free world, United States of America wake up to do what is right by putting Nigeria, S Nigeria in their rightful place. The C A P C, a country of particular concern, a country that kill Christian or evil failed state. Why United States make that bold move? Where is Russia, 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 Russia? Why haven't Russia spoken? Why is Putin moot? Rather, Russia wanna weigh in and see what US is going to do. Know your enemy. Biafran people. Where is China? Where is China? Have China condemned the killing in Biafra land? Have China condemned the killing of Christians? But this same useless China want to come to your land? Loot everything you have? All your mineral resources, they want to extract it without even paying you a dime? You don't even know how they get it out of the country. India, where is India? All this India, where they are? All these countries are not speaking. My fellow citizens, if you don't know, you have a lot of enemy. You have a lot of enemy. You are trying to escape from colonial rule where the Chinese are coming in with their own language to start all over. Some trained in that S country called Nigeria. There are some words that are written in China. How many of you study China at school? They want to force you back to start to study China before you know you start speaking Chakinchon. Before you know your daughters will be married to these people that never met well with you. Before you know your children, they will abandon your mother tongue language and start speaking unknown language. We are not saying we Biafrans can't do business with them. But we don't want them to come through the back door. Come through the garden front door. If you are Biafra, you want to travel to China, you have to obtain your visa. You go through their immigration, they vet you, they check you properly. But when they come through your land, they coming freely. They control you. You even work for them. There is nothing wrong by doing business. We live in a global village. People all over the world travel around, they move around. That is the nature of humanity or humankind. That is how God designed it. But that don't mean you will leave your own God-given land to unknown territory. You want to take over their resources? You want to dominate them? You want to treat them as second-class citizens? It's time we Biafrans know our enemy. Where is Qatar? They are not speaking. Where is Saudi Arabia? After the emigration of the S Nigeria, the Eastern Region, we have our own flag. Do you know Saudi, they condemn the flag, they actually burn it inside it? A symbol of that will suppress you, will marginalize you, will take over your land, will Islamize you. Saudi Arabia, they don't speak. They will tell you they are more moderate Muslims. And they will use the Islamic jihadist terrorists as their food soldiers, doing the dirty work for them. There's nothing like moderate, they all decide. Know your enemy. Align with him who align with you. Love him who love you. We played with United States of America to hasten up to do the needful. As the leader of the free world, as the police of the world, when U S say let's go, the rest of the world full. For some weeks now, please the media team, we, you know, we need to do some fine touchings in this, it's very important. We don't want what happened in Afghanistan, Afghanistan, to happen in S Nigeria. We don't want United States of, State of America to come to Nigeria in the name that they want to fight the Islamic jihadist terrorists. And in result of that, we don't want them to arm the terrorist army. If they collude and arm the Nigerian military. United States of America should remember, they are arming Boko Haram. They are arming ISIS, ISWAP, Okaidan. Nigerian military, over seventy, eighty percent are terrorists. Real integrate so-called terrorists to Nigerian military apparatus. That is exactly what the country called Nigeria have done. In Afghanistan, after United States of America trained and equipped over two hundred and something personnel, military personnel, thousand, not knowing that over ninety percent are the same Taliban. After U S withdrew, what happened? The Afghanistan Army surrendered to the Taliban without putting no fight. Till today, it blow the mind of America. Till today, America is still regretting it. Because America left billions of dollars, billion, not million, of equipment. And that actually is surge of terrorism you see today. All this equipment, some of this equipment have landed in the hand of Boko Haram. That is a fact. Some have landed in the hand of ISIS, ISWAP. All these terrorists have one common goal and one major network. They all work together. Their goal is to Islamize the whole world. Their goal is to terrorize everyone, especially where you have mineral resources like in Biafra. Intelligent intel report from United States of America just few years ago made it clear that in the year twenty thirty, Nigeria, we, S Nigeria, we break up. We don't want to wait till twenty thirty before we all die. And this intelligent report made it clear that these terrorists, they're trying to make Nigeria, S Nigeria, a safe heaven. And when you say S Nigeria, where the terrorist want to have their base is in Biafra land. So they can lay their hand on these resources. And if that happen, then we attack the West. And if that happen, United States of America will be also in danger. If that happen, Europe will be in danger. So it's time, instead of United States of America to partner or to try to work with the Nigerian terrorist military, we have our B D F. They should contact the Biafra Republic Government in Azar. We can work out a deal which we already propose. We can work out a deal and counter this terrorism, counter this terrorism. It's very important. Because these terrorists, they don't have the same goal with us. They don't have the same ideology. We believe in Western civilization that is built of Christianity and Judaism. What these terrorist Islamic group or religion want to do is to set us backward. If we allow them succeed, instead of us riding in our beautiful cars, Lamborghini, Maserati, Mercedes, name it, we'll go back and be riding on horses. Do you want to go back to two thousand, three thousand years ago? When there is no car, no airplanes? Where people travel with camel, horses? Do you want to go back to the time of ages? Where there is no technology? And we talk about technology, it's not from the people that emphasize about their religion to be the best religion. It's the Christian Judaism that brought all this civilization where I can use my phone and make one, just one dial, one call. Somebody in Biafra land, the same second, we pick up and say hello, Mazi Okejukun. This is what the Western civilizations have brought us. We are fighting one common enemy. This Islamic group, whether the moderate from Saudi Arabia, Qatar, Turkey, wherever. All the technology, things that are making this life so adorable, beautiful today, did not emanate from them. Rather from the West. Is it, we're talking about China? If the United States of America move all their companies from China, China will go down in less than a second. Just few years ago, during the administration of President Biden, the president of China visited U S here, pleading with major companies like Elon Musk. He actually have meeting with over four hundred businessmen and women. Pleading, pleading for United States of America businessmen and women not to pull their company out of China. The West lead, let it be the way it is for now. You can't fight it. We align ourselves with civilization. We align ourselves with the West. We are not Boko Haram. Boko Haram is against Western education. Boko Haram is against civilization. Boko Haram represent darkness. If you are a Biafra, you live in Western world, you enjoy everything enjoyable and you don't ask yourself question, how do we get here? You have a problem. And if you don't want Biafra land to be like or look like where you currently reside and you be having full electricity, you be having the basic amenities, especially from the government of where you live and you feel comfortable with all the goodies that come with it. You don't want that in Biafra land. You are worse than Boko Haram, you are evil. That means you don't wish your generation, your family well at all. You don't deserve to live or you live with the shit. Please, I urge every Biafra. This is a matter of life audit. We deserve to live. Our life is a stick. If you don't want to live, remember your children, remember your generation, remember your lineage. If you don't want to live, save the life of the innocent women and children. Now that Biafra is trending, what are you doing? What are you bringing to the table? What impact have you made? How are you supporting this great cause? Are you supporting financially? Are you supporting by creating awareness? Can you tell we Biafrans the reason why you decide not to support your freedom? Few days ago, there is this rumor that a former criminal terrorist man, Carlo Biano, was dead. Do you know some people celebrate it? Some celebrate and say, oh, this evil man finally is gone. The reason why is that he's not pure, he's evil, he don't deserve to live. You as a Biafra, do you want Biafra to celebrate you? Do you want Biafra to remember you? Just like the way we remember our leader Ojuku and Philip Ifion. There is other that we supposed to remember that also fought during the war. But just because they betrayed, they sabotaged our leaders then. Instead of them being in our good book, we have them in our bad book. Somebody like Hope Oza Dem, do you think if anything happened to him today? Will cry about it or what? Rather would celebrate that an evil man is finally gone so he can go and rest in pieces. So he can go and rest in pieces. And all these evil people that have colluded with the terrorist S Nigeria. To kill Biafra's. Even if they died and we have, if they happen that they buried them in Biafra land. When time come, we dig their grave, bring them out, whether it's the bone, remain whatever it is. We'll judge them. We'll do whatever we can. If there's anything like recon, uh, recognition or what, so they can't even come back again. We'll make them suffer more. We'll have a. We'll have a place for them. Where we bury all these evil people. And name it something. We actually have a monument for them, like the one I watched few weeks ago. I don't know whether it's in Japan or wherever. Where people go and start slapping them. Evil is not good. If you one of, if you one of those. Practicing evil or doing evil, disease from it. Darkness can never win. Light at all. Wherever there is a darkness. Once light appear, what happen? The darkness disappear. All those that have been fighting us. Before our redeclaration, especially after Biafra is redeclared. It's time that you all come back and do what is right. Some of you, it's not your fault. Some of you, you will deceive. To believe in the wrong narrative. Or maybe I'm the bad guy. Or Maz Yogi Chukwun Kere is evil, he is this, he is that. It's all lie, you've been lied to. You will be welcome. If we found out. You're not part of this conspiracy of these evil people. We know those that we cannot forgive. And remember, the fight for our freedom. You are not fighting for Maz Yogi Chukwun Kere. You are not fighting for Maz Yogi Sun. You are not fighting for Bishop Comfort. First of all, you are fighting for your own freedom. Charity begins at home. You are fighting for your own freedom. And for those that are doing whatever they can to pull me down. What will it profit you? If you succeed? What will it profit you if you finally? Bring Maz Yogi Chukwun Kere down? Will you celebrate it? Then after you celebrate it, what next? Then you will do what I'm doing, right? Disease from evil. And for those independent medias. All those blogging just to make money, you can make money from any means, especially if you in the media. But speak the truth. Report their great news. Stop destroying a man that. Do you know how? Karma is real. All you evil people on the social media. Destroying Brigay. Destroying the genuine freedom fighters. Destroying the name of all the honorable ministers. Destroying my name. Remember karma is real. Everything you lay your hand. You will not prosper. Every nation of this world will walk against you. That is the best. I can do for you now. Cause I can bless you with your bad work. You can be blessed. You can be rewarded with good deed. When you do what is right. If you practice evil. You will be rewarded with evil. For all of you that are lying against us. From you to everything that come with you, all your package. Sorrow, agony. Every nation of it will walk against you. The air you breathe. Will walk against you. The water you drink will turn to poison. Because. These evil people, their own transits, their wars have killed. Hundreds and thousands of Biafrans. Their evil deed have misled a lot of innocent Biafrans. Some of them. Whenever you see them. Doing this, their media propaganda with lies. If they don't talk anything evil about Ojuku Nkere is a criminal. It happened to a leader Mazin Amdekan. It happened that Mazin Amdekan asked this question, you said Mazin Amdekan is this, Mazin Amdekan. He said, have he, uh, committed adultery with your wife? Have he stolen from you? Maz Yogi Chukwun Kere, I don't know, have I collected your money before? What do I do wrong to you? All I do is to fight for what I believe, Biafra. And my fellow citizens. Are you are not seeing the result too? Ah. Is the result shocking you? The truth always comes. Ngoza Rabesu promised her golly bowl once. And since most time. They will all be in Biafra land. I know by November. We are now in November, since most time, her wish. But that's not how it work. Even Mazzy Simon Epa once said, after our redeclaration. We will testify in our liberation. And that the Nigerian government will come with everything they have. To stop us. And it take years. Liberation is not something that you just close your eyes, open your eyes, you liberate the entire Biafra land. We have to put up a fight. It take time. It is just a gradual process. And this evil woman. Went on to say. She have negotiated flight from United States of America with Delta Airline. I hope that contract with Delta Airline is still valid. Or former is still waiting. Former and Diane will stay at the front seat. Because those that will stay at the front seats, they are somewhere, they're going to hit something. So you better know what the seat you choose. Those that will stay at the front seat are the cabinet members. Ngoza Rabesu will stay at the, uh, uh, cockpit with the pilot. Actually, she will be the one piloting this one, she must learn how to fly. So, yeah, Rudy first. And Diane will be the co-pilot of Abu. Solomon Unkoshia, you better come back, I heard you running, where are you going? Come back here. Onyemi, Kerebe, Onyemi in Nigeria. When I called this man, Carlo Onyemi, trying to educate him a little bit. I said, be careful. Try to talk to this man with good faith. He among one of those I call. Who I call Onyemi, I called the one they call Ugo two four seven. Who else again I tried to contact? Oh, God, the man. I didn't know, Onyemi recorded me and send it to Ugo two four seven, Ugo two seven four seven, we use it and do program. Ugo two four seven, where are you now? How about us? These people, they will be at the front of that airline. I will make sure the airline will be the one that will be able to take all of them at once, no going and come back. Because if that airline land in S Nigeria, we already know what will happen. You not come back again. And they being so evil. This evil woman. Said they are negotiating flight from Europe, is it KLM? Air France. The one in Europe, I don't know if they have finalized it or not. If it is a woman that love Biafra. She will also negotiate flight from Middle East. Cause we have some honorables from over there. Those that live in North Korea, South Korea. That means they are not part of those going back home, so they will go in the second or third bus. I remember. You know, when you speaking the truth. You doing what is right. You can sleep and sleep peacefully, wake up knowing that you owe no one. You will not be paranoid like somebody who commit a crime. You know, if you commit a crime against state. And maybe you are under warrant. The government is looking for you. If there is any law enforcement behind you, you will freak out thinking they coming after you. Because you know, you have. An question to answer. But if your heart is pure. You are speaking the truth. You are doing what is right, just like our leader Mazin Amdekan say, we are white and whiter than snow. Meaning that you have to be pure. I believe and I know I'm pure. And I believe majority of us here are pure. Keep the good work. You will be rewarded with blessing. But for the evil one. They always scatter. The evil ones will suspend you, that is not enough. They will, after suspending you. They still have a sleepless night. They say, no, this suspension is not enough. They will say they aspire you, that aspire is still not enough. They can't still sleep at night. Because their evil is tormenting them. Then they will wake up and turn around with emergency meeting. And select a sponge. Who have the best point on earth, let's, that's up here, let's sponge. Because. They are evil. And the question is that, what? This man called Maz Yogi Chukwun Kere. What have I done wrong? They don't have answer for that. I appreciate the admin rep from Eastern Region. Please, all of you from the executive. Keep doing. The good work, Biafra is here. No matter what happened few days ago, yesterday, those that tried to. Disrupt this beautiful gathering today. Truth prevail. Where the people prevail. The power that belong to the people, they prevail. Against the evils that people that they have planted in our midst. They expose themselves every day. They can't hide their enviness, their jealousness. They can't. For the past few months, we have achieved a lot. And those that call themselves freedom fighters that are fighting for Biafa, because of Biafa. They can't even tweet or post. Our achievements with all these beautiful men and women. Congress of the United States of America. They can't even post it. Because they are so ashamed of themselves. When we went for our congressional hearing, they can't even post it. Because they are not fighting for Biafra. They can't even post it, talk about it. We have one of our own recently that. Have been a strong ally advocating for Biafra. Mister Gunther. Some of these evil people that have. They have, they have disappoint themselves. Are so angry. That Gunther is working with the light. With the people of light. That Gunther align himself with Biafra Republic government in Gaza. And they forget that Gunther is not from, uh, from the zoo. He's from Western world. The way they think is different. And they know how to make their findings. Which he did. And he found out. The government that is piloting the affair of Biafra people. If you have not aligned with these great. Men and women. That are doing the right thing, kindly do that. Biafra Republic government in Gaza still remain the legitimate government. Brigay still remain the tools. That will take us to our final destination. Please, we need you. We love you. Be part of this wonderful family. Hurry up so we can all do what is right. Before it's too late. After United States of America, the leader of the free world pronouns. That they are coming to Nigeria, the S Nigeria. To deal with this, uh, bloodsucking terrorists. You all have seen that the terrorist. State of Nigeria and the jihadis, they have been testified. It's like the killing just started. Because that is what they are known for. These terrorists believe in what they are doing. That is what their religion taught them. Their religion teaches them that that is the way of their Allah. Their religion taught them that is a holy war. I don't make, know what make it holy. When they keep killing. Biafran Christians, even the Nigerian Christians. Because the middle belt has taken Christians over ninety percent. And we Christians all over the world, we love ourselves. We are all brother in Christ, Jesus. Please, we played with every Biafra. This, uh, government that was shut down recently, the United States of America. That was shut down for some time. Every open. And remember. When the government of America shut down is the government of the whole world we're talking about. Cause the decisions made from Capitol Hill. It affect the whole world. They have been a little bit slow in process of our freedom because of that. But we have meetings, meetings line up. Very soon, very soon. Very soon. We'll see the result as usual, we have meetings line up. Especially now. That Nigeria is designated as country of evil concern. Every member of Congress one will be on board. They want to register their name to deal with that shithole, disgraced country. You know, when I use, when we used to call Nigeria Zoo or shithole country. They don't know that even President Trump even hate them with passion, calling them disgraced. I remember, what a disgraced country. Embarrassed country. Country where a terrorist is the leader. Country that the, that supply arms to terrorists, to terrorize the citizen. What an evil country. Country that cannot accept when they wrong and they made a madman. Shithole country. Before I became. The acting prime minister. Even last year, last two years, I always said it. If I have the opportunity. If I have what it takes, I will burn down the zoo, S Nigeria, I will burn it. I will blow a trumpet. And say. My people. Let's get out of S Nigeria. That I'm about to burn S Nigeria down. We all remember what happened in Sudan and Gomorrah. If it's only one person. That survived, so be it. Whoever want to go down with S Nigeria, who burned everything down. We start all over. Chukokikia, Biamawa God in heaven, according to the holy book, the Bible. Made me to understand. That only Noah and his family. And the animals there survive the flood. Because of people that don't want to listen. When God ask them. To support Noah in building the Noah ark. They refuse. Because of their evil, like shit hole disgrace country called Nigeria. Then whoever believe in Noah survived the flood. And what about Sudan and Gomorrah? Lord and his family. Likewise. Ah, the same thing we repeat in Nigeria. Any Biafra that decide to be a one Nigeria. That Biafra will go down. With the scene of that Nigeria. Only how you will survive. Is to run away. To escape, to leave this shit hole shameful disgrace country called Nigeria. Nigeria have killed too many innocent souls. Look at what happened in Lucky Togi. The same country called Nigeria. Open fire. On innocent civilians. Even these innocent civilians are waving the flag of that dirty useless country called Nigeria. Not this flag, they are waving that their green and white flag, evil flag. They are still gone down by Nigerian military. I play with every Biafran. Support your freedom with passion, passion, joy. Be happy when you support your freedom. Knowing that your family, your children, your generation will have been better life. Yesterday. I receive a message. From Power Supply. That they will be walking in one of the building. And they told me from what time to what time. Exactly that time, the light went off. And exactly when they said that we turn the light back on. They turn it back on. Something like that cannot happen in that shit hole country called Nigeria. You don't even know when they take the light and when they will bring it back. Sometime they take the light for hours, for days, for weeks, for months, for years. T-shirts will go on strike forever. A whole six months, several months. Sometime people will work for a whole year without being paid. What a shit hole disgrace country. Country without sewer system. Country without no steady electricity. Country without running water. Country without good infrastructure. Country that think. Country where, when our kids graduate, they can't find a job. Tell me. What joy. Those of you that believe in Nigeria, what joy. Did Nigeria give you? How have Nigeria benefit your life, make you a better person? Peter Albi. A former president candidate. An evil man as, I'm one of those terrorist people. Peter Albi said Nigeria breed criminals. Because he is a criminal as well. I know because of time and our Biafrans. Those from homeland, we know what they are going through. Some of them are using their power bank. Some don't have light. You know, I feel so, so sorry that, you know, I'm even feeling guilty that. Some have tuning for past two, three, four, five hours. Sometime we, we even wonder how do they keep up without no light? How do they charge their phone, their gadgets? To be in this room with us? A darkness country. This is what they brought to us for over a hundred years and we want to put a stop to it. My fellow citizens from the eastern region of Biafra land. This is exactly what we are fighting for, so we can have a full steady life. The basic amenities. Things that will make us live and live better and want to live. We appreciate the fight that you all have put on from homeland. Please, keep doing the homework. Keep doing evangelism. When I say evangelism, I didn't say go from house to house like Jehovah Witness. You can do it in workplace, in marketplace. You can talk to neighbors, those that you know that will not betray, because there's too many saboteurs every week. Talk to your fellow citizens. That Biafra is here. Biafra is here. Send message to Tunubu. Chatiman, who will destroy them from Washington DC. This is just the beginning. Can you imagine a shit hole country called Nigeria? They don't even have ambassador in Washington. For years. They don't even have a lobby. A disgraced country. Thank you, my fellow citizens. I know I've spoken for quite some time now because. I don't know why no one is keeping the time for me. I'm sorry if I. But you know, if I take too much time. Keep supporting your freedom. Our freedom is here. And for a few weeks now, Biafra is trending. And in Europe, we are making things happen. Our allies and those that believe in what we are doing, just like Gunther. You know, there's a lot going on behind the scene. And it will soon manifest, just as usual. We don't, we have passed the time that we'll come and see what we're not going to be able to do. And we also want to remind the Nigerian terrorist states. Our leader Mazinamdekanu. Did not jump bail. Our leader Mazinamdekanu. Did not commit crime. The Nigerian terrorist state commit crime against Mazinamdekanu. If anything happens. Mazinamdekanu have been a trap for them. Abbasan just said it. What the Nigerian terrorist country state probably thinking the Biafra people. Not going to be able to do, we are running out of patience. No one have monopoly of violence. No one have monopoly of taking any one life. Not like Dankote, that fool. That Nigeria gave all the whole major businesses to operate. And make him richer. Than eBay to another. Nobody have monopoly. All these full army that look like bunga fish, tattered, dirty pigs. They don't look better than us one. They are not more educated than us two. You can't compare life with darkness. Just that, my people need to rise up. If they come with AK forty seven, you go with AK ten thousand. If they come with one, you march them with ten. Nobody in there, kid. Please, if you know, you can support financially, Honorable Minister of Information, please, if you can put the website. Or anyone there can showcase the website where, go there, support. We have our family members that live in IDP camp that this Nigerian terrorist state. Have chased out of their home. We are fighting to get these places back and liberate our land. And our families need to come back from IDP camp. It require money to do all that. It require money to liberate our land. It require money to take care of our citizens, our children, family members. Please support. Don't be a foolish. Don't be a fool. Don't starve Nigeria and come back in disgrace. We are not Nigerians, we are Biafrans. We can never be Nigerian. Ayesha Yusuf, that don't used to speak. Her video that was trending last week. She made it clear. That this union is not working. If we can't renegotiate, let us go back to how we were before. We Biafrans are not asking for renegotiate anything. We want to exit. We don't want to be part of those that don't like us. We don't want to be part of this Islamic jihadist terrorists that are cancer. Anywhere they go, they are so destructive. They destroy everything. They turn everywhere to shit hole. We want to be part of this civilized world. We want to be part of those that live and let live, so we can move forward. We don't want to go backward. We don't want to go back to one thousand five hundred, two thousand years backward. Where there is no car. Where there is no electricity. Where there is no airplanes to travel around the globe. We want to move with the civilization of light, not back to darkness. Thank you, my fellow citizens. Please. Don't let anyone break your spirit. Everything, let me, how many of us here? Sometime, sometime I myself, I'm just confessing here, don't use this against me. So I'm a human being. Sometime I myself, they try to wave me down, but it's no work. When you look at the load, things that need to be done, you're like, how do we get here? Yes, don't let no one break your spirit. Hear him. Who can break your spirit and take your life? Which is Jehovah God, Chukokkabiam, our God in heaven. Don't let no human being, born of a woman, to break your spirit. They try to break our spirit by disrupting our movement, by breaking us into pieces. By disrupting our funding system. By bringing disunity among us. Man, there's Namamo about, mad people everywhere. Don't let no one break your spirit. I know they are watching me, they are watching. Unageweni. You can't break my spirit. This time around. We must get it right. And we must be free. All of you haters. That thought. That think. Mazyogekukunkire will not be able to do anything. How far? At the end. When the international bodies come trying to have meeting with us. Who did they approach? You all watched my podcast with Gunther, how was it? Why he didn't go to other fake saboteurs? You all watched activity coming from Washington DC. All these saboteurs. What have they proved? What have they shown? What have they brought to the table? We have half congressional hearing, of which Marco Rubin was one of attend, attended as well. We have half series of meetings coming from Washington. All these saboteurs that want to break our spirit. How many have there? They should leave us alone. Karma is real. The table will turn and if they are not careful. When they come to beg for forgiveness, it might be too late. Because who all of them are accountable? Enough is enough. Support your freedom. Thank you from here. Don't let no one break your spirit. Hashtag, don't let no one break your spirit. Everything they are doing is to break our spirit, to weigh us down. Don't let that happen. Remember years ago. When all of us are there thinking, praying. Where we, Washington hear us? Am I speaking? Where we, where we, Washington listening to us? But it happened. It's happening. It's happening now before your very own eyes. You are still doubting, Thomas. It's happening now. Before your very own eyes. And you don't want to move and shift from where you are. You're because of your ego, evil jealousy. Please. Don't do anything you are doing because of me. Do it because of Biafra. When I go to Washington, I don't tell them I'm Biafra. I represent Biafra. If I'm gone now. Biafra still live. If you are gone, Biafra still live. Please, if you hate me, you can hate me. But for the sake of Biafra. Do what is right. For the sake of Biafra. Make sure our BDF get what they want. For the sake of the children, for the sake of the innocent unborn children, our generation. Thank you from here, Ndewo.
Yes, everyone. Yeah, I want to agree the house. Thank you, our APM. For your wonderful speech. Thank you, our honorable Minister of Information, Mazinamdekanu. And all the members, I greet all of you. Uh, there's nothing else to add to what he has already said. Hello? Hello?
You're hearing me?
Okay, you can hear me, okay, okay. Yes, I just want to support the, I want to support the eastern region with seventy thousand agents, Ndewo. Yeah, well.
Thank you, thank you very much.
One sec. Okay, there we go. Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Aquarawa. Um, that was a wonderful fiery speech. Uh. Those who have here, listen. Because we are moving on. And I will also contribute. On behalf of Aludo, another hundred Jema for APM's speech. Thank you. That will make it two people.
Very warm, Mazinamdekanu. Sir, thank you, thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. We appreciate. We come to IG, IG on Meet Yourself.
Good evening, everyone.
Yeah, well.
Hi. And good evening. Thank you for that job. I'm going to support, I will present a bunch of part-time agent. I'll send to Lagos right on.
Thank you very much.
Over to you, Yannis Hope.
Yeah, I'm Biafran, Ndewo.
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 You see, we are Biafrans. Something happened in this meeting today. I did not realize it. I missed it. The person concerned had to contact me through another person while we are all here. And that is the spirit of Biafran. And I'm saying it so that everybody who have not understood the meaning of being Biafran, should try and understand it. Uh, um, you are children of light. You have to reflect light. You have to walk in light. You can't say you are a child of light and you are swimming in darkness. Who are you trying to fool? And this person is from homeland. I did not realize or I was distracted when the individual was talking and made a donation, which I actually did not catch. Maybe that's why I missed it. I did not catch how much the individual donated. But the individual said Naira instead of AJ. Because I did not catch it, I didn't realize it. So if he is a Nigerian, he could have gone and say, well, it's my luck. But because he said a Biafran, he reported himself. And he asked what would be his penalty? Whether he's going to be warned for doing it or penalized for doing it. Now, I chose to pay the penalty because if I wasn't distracted, I could have caught the mistake. So I will not let it go. And I thank this our brother. This is what our leaders say. We are Biafrans, we are whiter than white, we are whiter than snow.
He said?
If you see stop sign, the sign says stop. You don't have to run it because there's no police. If you stop only when you see police, that's high service and you're a hypocrite. If you understand the meaning, stop. Stop. And that's when you are a civilized person. So my brother, and maybe I need to tell the world who this nice Biafran is, is our own brother Success. Thank you so much for being a good citizen. So, I am going to absorb that penalty. Uh, how much am I going to pay for it? Let me see. I wrote it down, oh, for goodness sake, where did I write it?
Honorable love.
Yes.
You can be the judge and be, uh, uh, Minister, are you here?
Okay, question, question, Onyisi. You want him to pay the penalty?
You know how you work now, you will be the one to find him, but instead of you now, since you are representing him, uh, Minister, we, we find you, huh? Am I, am I right, Minister of Information, love you sir? Honorable love. You not represent Success, so you can't find yourself.
But I'm not finding myself, I am paying the fee on behalf of Success.
Hey, wait for me, sir.
But remember, but all of you should remember. You see this little half-inch lady? I always remember things. Okay, so, Mki, you've been called to be the judge, go ahead, pass your judgment.
Please, don't take it on anyone before they give you, if you start giving high five.
No, you, you said I can't be, I can't, um, decide the penalty by myself. So now, Mki should be the judge.
Yeah, eh.
Let her decide.
Correct, you know why you can't be the one to decide the penalty? You're the one that brought the case to open to the courts. Mm-hmm. So you shouldn't be the one to see, give the finances. So Cherry, make another Assistant Judge, come and give the finances, so that you will now take the floor. To now appeal, you can now appeal.
No, I will not appeal anything.
Uh-huh, so, wait, make, eh, Assistant Judge, are you there? Madame Mki? If you're not there, we will call another, eh, judge, you know.
Mki cannot be off duty, who told her to be off duty?
You don't know whether she entered.
Mki is hiding, she better come out now, that is daybreak.
Okay.
Before she, before she get charged, eh, we issue a bench warrant to go get her. Uh-huh, so she better be out here now. Mki, where are you?
Wait, if Mki is not there, we, we have many, eh, chief judges here in this house.
Mki left her post, then she will be fined for leaving her post unauthorized.
Yeah, when she come, when she comes, she will get her fine. Um, Honorable, are you there? Eh, Honorable Abigail, are you there, Unmet Yourself? We have many chief judges in this house.
Hello?
Honorable Noye, are you there? Honorable, eh, Abigail, are you there?
Abigail locked the, locked the door, where is she? There, there.
I just got in, special greetings to the people of God.
Ndewo, Ndewo.
Quick, and then he's greeting.
Ndewo, between, between the two of you, which of the judge want to take the stage? Between Judge Josiah and Judge Noye, who want to take the stage?
I will, I can, I can take the stage.
What's the case about? We are going to judge.
Wait, Noye has already.
Okay, so, uh, Alopa, my honorable love, since you missed, since you missed the, uh, mispronouncement of, uh, Honorable Success, uh, and you decide to pay on his behalf, I will say, I will say you have to give us ten, ten AJMA.
Okay.
Ten AJMA, okay, okay. Hmm.
I will not appeal anything. That's final verdict.
It's final, yeah.
Yes, that's the final verdict.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Now, you see, my people, you know what we are doing? What we are doing is that we are training the people in government, so they can train the citizens. That's what we are doing. Uh-huh. So, don't look at it as a useless exercise. We are resetting the brains of Biafrans.
Yes.
You can never, never, never take Nigeria into Biafran. No, we, if we are going to do that, we better remain in Nigeria. There must be a clean, clear-cut difference between the two. So that's the whole thing. And I thank Minister Success for reporting himself. Okay. I yield, let's go.
For your good work and duty. We come to Irohibom. Irohibom, Yannis Hope, go ahead.
Hi, Irohibom State Administrator. I welcome our APM, or his founder for this, to welcome the Eastern Region, who could be a part of encouragement to us. So we are very happy, yeah, Irohibom State. So, we, Irohibom State, we have donated our donation by county, by fourteen county donated their donation, I want to call now. In the county, that twenty-three thousand AJ, Ndeya, Ekonor, twenty thousand AJ, Ibiyono Ibon, twenty-six thousand AJ, Eto, Eto, Oma, twenty thousand AJ, Ujo County, twenty thousand AJ, County, that thirty thousand AJ, Nseti Ibo, ten thousand AJ, Ibiyosi Po Asutan, twenty thousand AJ, Eighteenan, County, thirty thousand AJ, Oku, Ekonor Ibon, forty-two thousand AJ, Nseti Ibon, ten thousand AJ, Idebi Yonno Ibon, Idebi Yonno, thirty thousand AJ, Etam, County, thirty thousand AJ, Nseti Apai, ten thousand AJ, in total, Ekon, three hundred thousand AJ, Irohibom donated. Thank you, Mr. APM, thank you, my Minister of Information and Communications. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much, thank you. Thank you, thank you very much, Ndewo.
All right, sir, because of my limited time, so I will not waste much of our time. I'm going to support, uh, extra twenty AJMA because of our speech from our active prime minister and, you know, just to encourage each and every one of us. Thank you very much, APM, thank you very much, Information Minister. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, my honorable Sonia Parawa, and thank you, the media team, my APM. You are always so wonderful. Um, I thank you, the Eastern Region, for welcoming our APM and to support you on this. Um, I know it's very late for you over there, so I'll be quick. Um, I will support you with welcoming our APM, our honorable indomitable APM with a hundred AJMA. Thank you.
Ndewo, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello, hello. Hello, good evening, yeah.
It's dawn.
Supporting my beloved friend, acting prime minister, thank you again. I'm gonna, I'm, I'm supporting him with this speech for thank you again. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh. I did not jump in. I did not jump in, yes, I did not jump in. They came to my house just to kill me, to kill me. And the woman did not jump in. Your own Nigerian army, just to see me dead, oh. Your uncle said a defender did not jump in, defender did not jump in. And my witnesses, they were testifying, testifying in Abuja. Oh, your uncle ruled my law, he not jump, jump. The woman does not run. The woman does not jump, your baby, your uncle, my love, said that he did not jump in. My love, my love, my love. I don't know why my case should be contrary, the constitution Nigeria. Constitution of United Nations.
Extradition from here now.
Don't call my love, I am dead already, dead already. The only thing that can bring me back is the Africa. This life is meaningless without freedom, real freedom. African man. The Africa, oh, rise up like the rising sun, Nigeria, Nigeria. Divide peacefully, referendum. Referendum, now is African man, freedom, oh. I do your uncle ruling, my love, my love. Your uncle, my lord, he not jump in, the woman does not run. Real man no jump in, white out brother, persecute me, my lord, why persecute? Standing us and mine, my lord, there is God, oh, yes, and there is he but. The whole world is watching, I did not jump in. Yes, I did not jump in. Jump in, jump in. They came to my house to kill me, to kill like lettuce. Let it all get, let it all get started. Nigerian army came to kill me, just to see me dead, oh. I said, I said. I did not jump, jump in. To defend myself, Nigeria obey your uncle's order. I did not jump in. They can kill all, extradition. Extradition, I did not jump in. I did not jump, jump in.
Okay, thank you so much, Honorable Sonia, News of Information. Thank you for this good job that you are doing. And we have make it to come to reality, despite. History of this journey of freedom. And we are making it to come to reality. And we have been getting message as we are in this town hall meeting. Uh, some of these criminals that are looking for position over there is crying. How we are structuring and how we are moving forward. And they are asking how I wish they have somebody like you and I in their system. But I believe that I will not have it, because with God, all things are possible. And I want to encourage everyone to remain focused, going looking for the ball. And don't allow the spirit of receiver to enter into. Keep on looking forward and also every day in your life, you should be asking yourself question. Why are in this struggle, the purpose of you being in this struggle? Do you see this struggle as a career agitation in this, that every year you and I will be coming here to say entire meeting? We are tired of this, and that is the reason why. Many of us are trying our best to bring out all the mechanism that will make us to come, make this dream to come to reality. And we know that the kingdom of darkness are trying hard. But I know that when light appear, darkness disappear. I want to thank everyone for this today town hall meeting. We are expecting to host also the central region, sorry, northern region. Who's their own, and we're also looking forward for west and south. And it's a thanks that every one of us, it's a collective thanks that every one of us will join hand together to do it. And we must continue on doing all what we can and what we know how to do. We certainly thank our A P M for how he is highlighting the affair of this movement. I encourage him to keep it up, the homeland is behind him. All these noise makers that you are seeing, all those people that are making noise over there. They are making noise over there because the increment of the system or what is inside the system, they don't have it. And that is why you see that they are making that noise. And many of them who join partner with this madam. They when they are thinking that following madam will give them the source of information. And unfortunately, Almighty God disappear or disappoint them. Today is a wonderful day for us, you guys have seen how that we put this. But we still encouraging our brothers and sisters who is outside also to make sure that if we are still not performing well. You know that you over there, I know that you have asset to some of the peoples in your village. We are not saying that you should start doing others, but at least it's a part of evangelism. And there is a grassroots work that is going on now, as I'm talking to you. A serial grassroots is going on in all the forty states, and we are getting a good response. To be a part of this great movement, you will not regret it. And they always said, if you want to achieve greatness. Try to know how to guide their speech or guide their mouth or guide their secret. And lies what the Hattor is doing now. Thank you, those that going back in your bed, God, Almighty God will bless you. Thank you so much from here.
Thank you very much, thank you. I just wanna appreciate every Biafa here today and those in Zoom and wherever you're washing for, we appreciate you. If you're not able to join the Zoom, we appreciate everybody joining and please kindly, don't forget. The website is twenty-four seven, Biafa Republic Government dot O R G. And B, B R O G I E restoration, your hope, that please kindly visit, support your freedom, support your people, support your. Your media, support those that are setting the land of Biafa from this Islamic terrorist. And it's not just that we are not making it up, it's all over the world, all these Islamic terrorists, they are ravaging every country. Even in Europe, some of these countries are fighting for their survival, trying to deal with them. So now they understand and see what we are going through. It's real, it is real, if you think these people, they love you, they like you. They mean to dwell with you or live with you, it's a lie, their goal is to Islamize you, chase you out of your land. And even if they, if they happen to impose the Sharia law on you, law that you have nothing to do with. Law that is not of your culture, your system, your religion, so it's replaced. It's not just, it's more than threats. These people, they have come and they are in our land, where leader was in Nadi Canu years ago, was saying they are coming, they are coming. Something is a joke everywhere, one to any news coming from that S nine. You are saboteur, terrorist, the quara do this in Altina, in Banway, in Biafra land, it's already in military lines. And we are just fighting more, we chase the same terrorists in military unit from out of our land, it is real. If you have anger, do you mean that you are exempt? Who wants to die? You know, any Biafa that they kill or honor life is our, it's our family member. So please, let's do and hurry up to protect our land, protect our children, our mother, our family. Biafra is here, together we can all fight this fight and victory for us. Before this, a good time, a good one, please, this is from your evil. Evil will never pay you good, rather evil, you will be rewarded with. If your practice is good, you will be rewarded with good, please, good will always win, light will always win. Please join the children of light and do what is right, so that you will be in Biafra good book and you will be remembered and celebrated. And you yourself will have bits of mind, knowing that you do the right thing by fighting for our freedom. Thank you all, the executive from the eastern state. We appreciate your place and just keep doing the good work on our life, work in your state to make sure that we chase the. For this out of our land, thank you. Have an update. Okay, I don't know what about, what I say. Is making a donation of thirty thousand AJ, also a company, two thousand AJ. That's it, thank you.
Hello, good evening, Akparawa. Hello, my A P M, there was some. I'm sorry, Sundays are usually very tight around this time for me. But I had to, you know, run, run out from where I was to raise my hand before you close. Thank you, thank you so much for giving me this time, I want to appreciate everyone that made this happen today. Um, um, Eastern Region of Biafra, we are proud of you all, God bless you. Um, C O A and every admin, I want to say God bless you. And A P M, that speech was, it was, I don't know how to describe it, God bless you, sir. Those who have here, they should hear what the spirit is saying to the church. And so those who are still on the fence, I pity you. It's better you start funding your liberation now, that there's still time. Have your name written in the book of Biafra, thank you, Akparawa, for standing strong and for keeping this house. Uh, rolling, and shame to all the saboteurs. And if you are still yourself, trying to lie to people. Just to dissuade them from what we're doing, God will punish you. Our A P M said, everything will walk against you, nature will walk against you. The water you, you drink will be a curse to you, the food you eat will be sickness to you. Unrepentant, and turn a new leaf, stop lying to people. Stop lying to people, you are stupid idiots, host, host stupid spaces, lying to people, calling our A P M names. Call him T, uh, A T, and all that, God will punish you all. Stop your lies, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm taking time, it hurts when you see people that should know the right thing to do, they are doing. Politician, um, thank you. And to my able, mighty success. The Chief of Defense, God bless you, your speech was the wonderful one. And I want to thank you for stand so strong beside our A P M and Information Minister, may God bless you. You are one in a million, mighty success, God bless you, sir. Um, yeah, I just want to say thank you all, and I drop my mic here with fifty thousand AJ, God bless you, everyone. Allah ma, God bless you ma.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Minister, Minister Yunis. So for coming late, I don't know what, what our officer will say about that, offer. For, um, it's a Yunis coming late, in a, in a fine.
I will, A P M, well. Um, we have not, we've not made any, enacted any law for delay commerce, but they need to know. They need to know that we are not stopping. You see how we enacted another law yesterday, unannounced, that's the way we are going to do that. So if you are coming late and forming a habit and thinking you are the good person, we see you and you will be punished. Inducism. Of course, we have not enacted any law to that effect, Yunis, you will go in peace today, but sin no more.
Amen, Allah ma, I, I want to, I want you to start this new law, let you start with me, thank you for honoring me, but I want to start it.
We have not enacted it now, that's the reason, yeah, that's what I'm saying. But you did well to, to lower your hand, because that law was enacted yesterday.
Okay, eh, eh, please, I want to. I want to add a little bit, a little bit, um, a gem, a gem to the one I, I already.
All right, you can do that.
Yes, I want to, to those, all of those fools that are always online with their ten and twelve listeners. After twelve hours, they have only fifteen people still listening, I want to say may God punish them. May Amadya punish them with ten thousand AJ. If all of them, university and then more, God will punish all of you.
All right, I hope you submit your list to Amadya.
I have all, all right. All right, thank you.
Please, Honorable Sonia, as we are wrapping up. There's a video or audio you played, was it yesterday, about Onyendu, talking about the regions Biafra. We will appreciate a copy of it, so that we use it, we'll be using it to educate Biafrans. Especially those ones who are, uh, whose head are strong. Who sees the light and follow darkness. We will be using it to educate them about the regional creation of Biafra. So we will copy of it. And secondly. Who can even start appreciating it here, if you can play it once before the meeting ends. I said, there's an audio of Onyendu, M S, M N K, you played. In yesterday's general fundraising about the regions of Biafra. So we will need a copy of it, so that we can be using it to educate Biafrans. Those stubborn ones who antagonizes what we are doing about the regions of Biafra. We will appreciate. Thank you for the media fans. Okay. Okay. Okay, there.
Thank you very much, please, uh, yeah, before that, please start your, yeah, just one second, I just wanna let every Biafa. What we are doing speaks for itself. Anyone who claim to, you know, tell you they are fighting for Biafra freedom, they are doing this, doing that. We want result. Let them show us what they have achieved for the past week, two weeks, a month, two, three. If whoever can't, if they can't, that is the result there, so that, you know, shame, shame unto them. Shame unto those that, that think that they can break our spirit or stop what we are doing.
that think that they can break our spirit or stop what we are doing. We just started to. We just started. The fire is burning, burning more than used to. And we are getting more tougher, more harder every day. So the evil ones that are working against our freedom, I don't know how they sleep. Please, for the true genuine freedom fighters here, for all the members of the cabinet, I, I will appreciate all of you here, rep and admire everybody. Please visit our website, support your B D F, support your freedom. No one else will do it wrong. In few days, weeks, we will get more news coming from where it's happening. Not, it all happened in Switzerland. It happened here, United States of America. It happened from Washington DC, the capital of the world. The shutdown is over. The government have reopened. So Nigerian government terrorist state, they will be ready. Why you are doing the misful, what is supposed to do? We, Briggy will be doing what we be doing for most. But the Nigerian terrorist state, they are crying, they are talking about, they have not started yet. Nigeria have collapsed. Thank you very much. And, uh,